Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm calling the county board meeting together this evening, and I'm going to ask that the Kirk call the roll.
Alex. Anderson. Yes. Anderson.
Yeah.
Bensel.
Here.
Burson. Metz.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Forward.
For Enzo.
Ezri.
Here.
Holmertio.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Gibler.
Here.
Eastherz.
Here.
Leganheim.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
Michael.
Michael's absent. She called in prior to the meeting, so she's excused absence.
Mitchell.
Here.
Booger.
Here.
The Potter.
Here.
Adrian.
Here.
Chris Mary.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Rosales.
Yes.
We do have a forum this evening.
Chair, I am acting as chair tonight because Mr. Weibel is temporarily absent to see his daughter in a concert. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of April 3, 2012. Moved by Mr. Rosales, seconded by Mr. Ezri. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum. Moved by Mr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Ammons. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. This evening, we have public participation. Joe Lamb.
Hi, my name's Joe Lamb. I'm with Open Road Asphalt and Open Road Paving. We're located at 1414 West Anthony Drive in Urbana. I think I visited this board approximately six months ago in regard to the Olympia Drive project. It's come to my attention since that time that there's been an outcry from some of the residents and some of the landowners up there in regard to this project, and I guess I'd just like to go back in time a few minutes. I don't know how much time I have, but this won't take very long. But over the last decade or so, the city of Champaign, the city of Urbana, as well as this county board and the county highway department, have made a concerted effort to move the industrial businesses within the community to a location together, close together, some of us competitors, some of us not, to an area on North Lincoln Avenue. As part of this arrangement, our old location on Oak Street was transferred to the Church of the Living God. It's located at Bradley and University, and our old office is now the headquarters of the church there on Bradley. As a result of this move, all at our own cost, to appease the city and the county, we moved up there and purchased land from the Squire Trust. Now, the Squire Trust is made up of three separate individuals that obviously on this issue do not see eye to eye. But I do want to point out to the board, and it would be very easy for you to validate everything I'm saying here tonight, and that is that approximately five, six years ago, we purchased attractive land from that same group. Part of that group is here tonight, and part of that group objects the increase or the extension of Olympia Drive and Lincoln Avenue. And I'm only here tonight to refresh everyone's memories, including hers, that when we came to an agreement on the price, that I was told that due to Olympia Drive coming through, the price of the land was going to cost more. And so, we paid that price, and this project should have gone ahead five years ago. But due to the same individual that gouged me for the price of it as I came up here, I'm standing before here tonight, after having laid off three permanent employees and having laid off 17 seasonal employees due to a lack of work up here. So before we go on and see how the goats are going to produce cheese and stuff like that, I do want you to know that there's real human beings in this county that have suffered due to the lack of progress on this issue, and that some of the individuals that are here objecting to it have already profited and banked it five years ago. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Janet Charlo?
My name's Janet Charlo. I live at 3610 North Lincoln in Urbana. And actually, what I want to speak to you now is about the roundabout. I recently received a copy of a letter that was written by News World Press and the mayor of Urbana. The letter, the date is March 1, 2011. That would be right before the vote of Lincoln Avenue, the letters addressed to all board members. By the content of the letters, obvious that this board was being strongly pressured by the city of Urbana to vote yes on the Olympia Drive project. It was a decision taken by the county, and it was not a decision by the state. It was hard work, and it was hard work, and it was not a decision by the state. It was a decision taken by the county. It seemed like everybody, the mayor, has set up a custom judgment that the roundabout is going to be. They have chosen one. My great-grandfather worked on the fire farms and worked the soil for his family. It was then passed on to my grandfather and my grandmother. They also worked on the soil, long and hard days, with sweat and tears, but good and bad cop, they were still alive. No one helped them. They went there to their children, to the boys around the big square, to the farmers, to all the families, to all the time jobs. They loved the farm and the heritage of the place. It was a passion, and it was a love. And I love the family, and I love the children. They were here to stand for the law and for the mayor. They were here to be for the mayor. They were working and providing taxes to secure the land, providing the facilities, libraries, furniture, and everything. They lived here, friends and family, family, and they were proud of the people that they loved. They were here to help the city, to help the people, to help the people. It was our love and our honor that we took the road to Roundabout. The heritage of the heritage of our area already compromised by the road itself. We prefer again to lay Roundabout step down in the middle of our neighborhood. We want to continue to enjoy some of the history, the peace, and the beauty that our lands has brought to us for almost a hundred years. We feel a simple, underfused, three-way stop, and a very small amount of traffic these roads will experience for many years. If there must be a roundabout, build it when the road goes before it's fine, but not now. There is only one city that has been discussing roundabouts within their councils. You know where that idea would be made from. The groups of the Benner needs, the residents and the public have all had their voice heard, and they are against the roundabout at this location. Please don't be pressured again to agree to something new without the staff and the community, and that what the residents want, and the only one that they want.
So no further public participation. Public participation closed. Communications closed.
Where the Commissar sent a letter, returning the opposition to the landfill, putting PCBs above the Aquifer. On the US EPA, the US EPA is getting on the application, continuing on an additional 30-day period, and another 60-day new study of this landfill over the Aquifer. We're moving forward on the opposition on the legal front, and I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. Secondly, for myself, I received a letter from the State Emergency Response Commission. I've been appointed to the Champaign County Local Emergency Planning Commission. This planning commission helps to ensure that response to chemical release incident will protect the members of that community, and I've been placed on that committee. Thank you.
Any other communications, Ms. Carol Ammons?
I just want to inform the board members that there's going to be a public forum held by citizens groups, CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, which is coming up this Friday, May 11, 2012, at 6:00 PM at the Urbana City Council Chambers. There will be members from Monroe County, Indiana, that's coming about the jail issue, and we want to invite the board members to attend. It is publicly noticed already, so we don't have to worry about too many of us being there. That'll be this Friday at 6:00 PM. We'll discuss this issue publicly.
Yes, Stephanie.
I just wanted to remind everyone that today, the Convention and Visitors Bureau did have their ribbon-cutting ceremony, and it was just a really great day to be able to go and participate. There were a couple other board members that did go and participate. What a wonderful attribute that we have added to Champaign County for the Convention and Visitors Bureau to have their own site for so many other people to come to and pick up information about what Champaign County has to offer. I'm just extremely pleased that we, as a board, are participants in the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So if you have some opportunity, go by and visit their site on Neal Street.
Further communications? We've got a conference. Please, Mr. Reinhardt, if you would join us. Item A is the physical plant monthly reports.
On your desk, each of you should have a handout supplied for our monthly reports. We do not have them in the packet this month. We try to give you the most accurate, most current numbers available, like we gave them to you this evening. First of all, I'd like to know if there's any questions. Yes, Patsy?
I know that you have done a lot of energy-saving work on the electrical side of the buildings, yet I see that to date, when I compare 2012 with 2011, it's costing us more than it did last year. Can you give us some sense of why that might be the case?
Yes, I can. Probably if you was, there is another electric comparison I supplied you, which is a couple items down on the agenda. If you would wait till then, I'd be happy to give you that.
Thank you very much. Further questions? I'd entertain a motion to receive and place on file.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Richards, seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. The Art Bartel Construction Project.
On page A of your packet is the current spreadsheet showing the values available there. The only activity that's occurred this past month was another partial payment to Burns Clancy for $6,977.
Questions from committee members? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to receive and place on file by Mr. Ezri, seconded by Mr. Mitchell. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. We're now to the item that Pat, Patsy raised, which is the electric for natural gas building efficiency comparison.
On page nine of your agenda, what I have supplied is a first quarter comparison from last year to this year for the Brokens Administration Center and for the Champaign County Courthouse, both in electricity and on page 10 of natural gas. On page nine for the electricity building comparison, if you would look, the number that's really, you're looking to see is the 2010-11 kilowatts per square foot by the average daily temperature as opposed to the 2012 kilowatts per square foot average daily temperature, even though the dollars and the degree days are what make a difference to that value. And 2011, I see, excuse me. Yeah, okay. 2011, the kilowatt per square foot by the daily average temperature shows .1203. This year, for the courthouse, the 2011-12 kilowatts per square foot by the daily average temperature shows .08. So even though the dollars spent appear to be higher, if you take in consideration for the daily average temperature or the degree days, you can see right now that it is, in fact, a very small but a little bit of a cost savings. And what that also shows you is that the further you get away from 55 degrees or 50 degrees, I may, going either direction, your building becomes less efficient, because the colder it gets, the more it costs to heat it. The hotter it gets, the more it costs to cool it. So those are all numbers that just kind of play in there together to affect the daily average cost. On the courthouse, you'll see roughly the same thing. The cost per square foot by daily average temperature for the courthouse last year was .1417, and this year it is .10. It's not a lot, but it's down a little bit. So we're starting in the right direction. Did that make any sense at all?
No, because when I look at the chart, actually, the use of kilowatt-hours is greater of this, after there's been these adjustments. And then also, one other column that would have been helpful is what is the cost per kilowatt-hour? You do it by per square foot, which really isn't as helpful as knowing what the cost per kilowatt-hour is.
Because of our contract agreement, our energy purchasing contract, our kilowatt, our cost per kilowatt is exactly the same from last year as it is this year. So we are comparing apples to apples as far as that cost.
Okay, so somewhere along the way, much more electricity is being used in the 2011-2012 time period as compared to the 2010-2011 time period?
That definitely looks like it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And on page 10, you'll see roughly the same figures, but applying to natural gas with the Brokens Administration Center at .0088, and this year it is at .0069, and a small savings also in the courthouse for the natural gas.
Mr. James.
Well, Alan, wouldn't you say on the gas with the degree days, because we had such warmer temperatures, that's probably what affected that more than anything?
Oh, absolutely.
And on the electricity, getting back to what Patsy was asking, if I could back up a little bit, I guess, Patsy, correct me if I was wrong, with all the energy-efficient things that we've done, the lights and the switches and that, we would think the consumption per kilowatt-hour should be down. You know, I realize costs may have gone up a little bit, but it seems like the kilowatt-hours are up quite a bit from what, I mean, are people starting to leave stuff back on because they think we're saving money by putting in these energy-efficient items, or do you have any idea?
Well.
Are they burning late-night oil?
They cannot leave them unattended. If they're, it's possible they've increased their work hours and staying a little bit longer from time to time, but I think as an average, the usage has stayed the same.
It hasn't.
Usage looks like it's gone up.
It's grown up.
The occupancy has changed.
The occupancy is still pretty close to the same, yes. If there is another format anyone would like to see about how we compare these, I'd be happy to take that into consideration, see if I can do for you. This is a, the numbers can get very tricky when you try to compare one year to the next.
Other questions?
Yeah, just one. I was also confused by the average daily temp column. Okay, I'm looking at the Brokens, the Brokens table.
On gas or electricity?
Electricity, sorry.
Okay.
And the left side says 2010 to 2011 electricity. The right side is 2011 to 2012 electricity. And on each, in each of those, there's two average daily temp columns, one that says 10 to 11, and one that says 11 to 12. What are those numbers?
It probably makes more sense if I remove the average, well, those are the average daily temperatures supplied to us by the utility companies that come with each billing. And I suppose for the comparison, I should probably take the column 10-11 out, just redundancy shown twice.
But the numbers are different.
Alan, I think that she raised 10-11 here, and then you carry it forward into the next one, where it's 11-12.
Okay.
I think that she was at 9-10.
9-10 and 10-11, I suppose a 10-11, 11-12 would be, that would make sense.
That would make, and are those months or years? 10-11, 11-12?
That's the fiscal years.
Okay, so under 2010, 2011, you're saying it should be the average daily temp, the first column is actually from '09-'10?
Yes.
Oh, I see, okay. And then the 11-12 column, it carries over into the, what should be, okay, thank you. I think I understand now.
I will correct that for the next quarter report.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to receive and place on file. Moved by Carol Ammons, seconded by Geraldo Rosales. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item D, reports on repair and maintenance of various facilities. Ms. Reinhardt.
As requested at the last meeting, we have supplied the printout from the county's AS400 accounting system for review. That is all that's available. In the email, when I forwarded it to Mr. Weibel, I did explain to him that if you're, our accounting system, it does not give you an exact detail of what each purchase was. And the only way that information can be done is to go back and remove, pull each voucher from the files for every purchase, and a lot of times, there are multiple, multiple different items for the purchases.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on. We're out to item E, which is the draft document to be included in RFP for Champaign County capital improvement facilities master planning services. If, Alan, you could walk us through this a bit?
I would be happy to.
And I'd really appreciate it, because this is kind of the first time out on this issue for a lot of members.
What I've attempted to do is, is put together the plan and basic information of how we would to set up a master plan for the capital improvement for all the facilities. Of course, our goal would be to plan ahead for future repairs, so we don't get caught with needing another large chiller without any funding available. Okay, the first issue we would do, we need to perform a condition assessment for all county buildings. We will take each building, and we would look at it from architectural point of view and a mechanical point of view, and there would have to be a team created to do that. The recommendation is a professional team who are current with current technologies and equipment values. So an architectural engineering firm is recommended. Of course, the architecture will take care of structural efficiency code violations and all of those items listed there. An engineering firm would take care of all the major mechanicals and minor mechanicals. Take a good look, estimate the remaining life on them, what the replacement value would be, and suggest that, you know, that is or is not, should not be considered to be used again, it's not energy efficient for whatever reason. And then after they make the assessments for each building individually, then they would determine an estimated replacement value. As I've said on page 19, there are multiple formulas you can use, a very simple one, which I'm recommending here, is just the original installation cost times a calculated increase for inflation, and then find out the, to the normal life expectancy, if we know it's going to be a 20-year equipment, okay? And then that would give us an estimated replacement value for that, for that individual component or system. Along with that, while you're doing that, green technologies and sustainability, you know, there are many options to be considered, you know? And as I stated, the present expectation in this field is that it will bring innovation and change similar to the information technology explosion that's happened over the last two decades. So we really want to take a serious look and see what technology is available and what we can do with it. Okay, once comparisons are completed, determination is made for the equipment system, we need to figure out just what it would cost annually to be ready for that. To do that, we know what the estimated replacement value is, we know what the normal life expectancy is. So with those two items, then we can come up with a value that could be plugged into an annual budget to put back into a savings account, so to speak. Once all these individual units are done, as a condition assessment is being completed, we want to take an overall look at the building itself. We talk to the users and make sure that we know that they're busting at the seams, and they've got to have more file storage if they cannot figure out a way to purge it. You know, they know there's a new mandate coming, and they're going to have to put in three new personnel, and/or are there mandated corrections, like one of the items we'll be looking at next, after this little section's finished. So take an overall look at the building, and take a look at the individual value of the building. Okay, we know we're going to put $200,000 into a $100,000 building. Does this make sense? Or is it a $2 million repair into a $1 million building? I'm not suggesting we do anything yet, except just look at it. We just need to have that big picture to see where we're at before we start putting money into it. If it passes, if a building or a section of the equipment passes that criteria, then we move that into a master list for the capital improvements, where we compile all of the information, and then weight it, figure out what's most critical, what do we need to get ready for first, what is expected. Of course, it's the best we can. We're not going to hit it 100% all the time, but we, I think we can get reasonably close to it.
Before I open it up for questions, I'm going to have a question for you. In terms of this process, obviously, we're not going to take action tonight on it, but roughly speaking, since you've done quite a bit of the background here, in terms of this RFP, when you hire an architect, engineer to do this kind of assessment of the county's facilities, since we're not allowed to ask the money question when we do the RFP, I'm going to ask it before we do it, what's the rough ballpark on that?
I cannot tell you that right now. Deb and I have discussed this a little bit. We're estimating that the assessments of the building themselves would take one to two months, more likely two months, to go through everything with two teams, and that will take some time. So honestly, I have, we have not put a number of value to it this time.
Here's a question, and a follow-up, before I open it up to everyone else. I usually don't do this, but I'm going to this time. Have other counties done this kind of process in this form, and can we get some idea on the money that it's going to cost to have this assessment? Do we have an ability to find that information out?
I think most counties have done this a long time ago, and so this initial assessment point is not something that we're going to have, be able to get relevant numbers, at least counties that are comparable in size to us and the number of buildings that we have.
How out of date would the other counties be? 10 years? 10 years, 20?
Well, we can certainly contact them and find out, but I, I'm thinking most counties have had capital improvement plans, the counties that I typically work with for at least 15 to 20 years, or they have a building commission where it's then not incumbent on the county board to do this, but...
Questions for members of the board? Carol.
I did want to find out, A, why your department, Mr. Reinhardt, couldn't do the same thing since you have the formulas for it already, and B, that we talked some months ago about just really having a comprehensive plan for the county. This would be included in a comprehensive plan, which committees could do similarly to what we did with the strategic planning committee, and utilize your expertise as opposed to paying an engineer firm to do this? Why wouldn't we do that internally?
I do not have the same expertise with, about the current technology that a professional architectural or engineering firm would have, first of all. I can do this, but it would take, well, it'd be one person, do not have the staff to, to support me, and I would virtually have to do this, perform this by myself, along with a lot of research, and it would take an enormous amount of time for me to complete one building, let alone the seven major ones plus the, the other minor buildings.
Mr. James?
Well, I was going to say, back when the facilities committee was meeting all the time, we did a building by building, a department study where everybody told us some of their needs, whether it be carpeting, storage space, what have you, and was competent and all that, and also on their buildings, what their roofing, other things they were going to need. Of course, a lot of that was an educated guess, but in my mind, I would hope that there's a record somewhere, like when we've made improvements to the satellite jail or the downtown jail, the courthouse, all that should be on record, just like all the renovations we did, and from that, like you said in your formula here, there's an expected life for all that stuff, and yes, due to the weather here, sometimes it deteriorates faster, but what, what Carol was saying, to me, a study is fine, if you get the right people in to do the study, and I know we have a lot of local people, I always go to the U of I or Parkland or wherever, but if we do a study and it just sits on a shelf, like some of the studies have in the past, I begrudge that money being spent because it could have been used to do things we need to do. I know we had a, a storage building, we wrangled over for about a year and a half, and then we finally ended up building a building, like some of us had advocated at first, and I look at the time and the money and the effort, I just, I think you're on the right track, Ellen, I think you've been doing a lot of good things and Deb's been helping with it, but I think our people, our staff, our employees, probably know best what their buildings need, more so than, like you're saying, some of the updated stuff that a lot of us don't have knowledge of, but to hire a consulting firm, to me, they're going to come in, unless they're well-known and versed in this, they're going to tell you all this other stuff, and if it just sets up on a shelf, we're not going to have any input to it at all, so I think we need to look in-house first, is my opinion.
Ms. Petrie.
First of all, thank you very much for doing this, Ellen. I learned at caucus this evening, this has been on the horizon for a couple of decades, so this is much appreciated. I have a couple of, of thoughts, build a little bit on what Ms. Ammons and Mr. James just stated. We, we have the beginnings of a comprehensive campus plan that was set aside at the time of a nursing home was built. We have that foundation, we're working on a jail, expansion, renovation, we don't know what, but potentially, there might be a empty building in downtown Urbana that could be used for some other purposes. So to just go through the buildings, one building by one building, to evaluate the existing conditions, et cetera, as you've laid out, is one part of it, but I'd like to see it pushed up to more of a macro level, so that we can get a better picture of the needs and potential uses of all of the buildings connected with the county campus, and what our needs, our projected needs might be down the line. Do we need more buildings? Will we become more efficient so we can use our spaces, capture the space of the downtown jail, and look at it from those perspectives? As to hiring a consultant, how about this alternative? Hire somebody for a one-year time on the county, which would cost much less than bringing in a consultant. That person's going to be on board for a whole year to see the project through and get things started, so it doesn't lay on the shelf, which happens all too often with consultant reports, and that we get a chance with somebody who is on board to get a better and a more complete picture of what we ought to be doing here in the county, so that we can use that for another decade or a decade and a half. And then, my last comments, there are a couple of things that I'd like to add to your very complete report. On page 19, I appreciate very much you adding green technologies and sustainability, but I do want to make sure that we talk about the factor of obtaining grants to do any of this, this work. And then on page 20, when you list condition assessment, there's nothing listed under here about giving any economic value to the embodied energy in our buildings, and that's a huge oversight. We might decide that a building isn't worth renovating, but when we start looking at the embodied energy in the building, that might tip the scale completely on what we would choose to do with it. I would, I would add that to, under the master lists of capital improvements, and then I would also add, looking at a comprehensive plan for the county campus. Thank you.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Fatsy for saying pretty precisely what I've been thinking about this. I, I like the, I like the start on laying out what we need to be working on, but that, that aspect of a long-range facilities master plan, that's, that's not focused on just maintaining what we have, but figuring out what we need five years, 10 years, maybe even 20 years down the road, is an angle that isn't quite captured in here. The best opportunity might be to reuse a building or remodel a building, it also may be to build a new building, as we did with the storage facility, and I, I don't see quite how that new building or the, the campus master plan fits into the way this is, this is described. I also think it's, it's an interesting alternative to bring, bring the expertise in-house for a year, because if we think about, if we look at how much it would cost to hire an outside firm to do this for us, we may find that actually bringing in an employee for a year might be comparable, and we might get more value out of that than, than just a consultant that stops the clock, you know, starts and stops the clock exactly on the minute, so, um, I, I think, I think this is a positive direction, and I look forward to getting more information on it.
Mr. Schrein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I appreciate, Ellen, the work you did here, and I agree that we do, we do need an assessment like this, but the other thing I think the board really needs to understand too is, is that we're going to have to have professional services eventually. Being where we are located and all the facilities of county are, eight years ago, when I got on this board, really, we had to change a doorway out here in this building, it took an architect to get approval from the city of Urbana. So you're going to pay now or you're going to pay later? Me, you're going to need a firm to get approval from the city of Urbana anyway, almost to change a damn lock in this place, so, I, I think it's just one of those things we're going to have to do to get professional services right off the bat, to do the study. And if we have that, then that will be part of the work, that when we do have to make changes and improvements, we will have that professional architect or engineer to back up our plans that need to be done with the city of Urbana, because that's flat out, Urbana's going to have to prove it, period. Thank you.
Ms. Bergson.
Get a guy with all of the skills necessary for this, I think would be very, very expensive, and I think it'd be very hard for anyone to do it all. I think getting a professional consultant would probably make more sense.
Other comments, other contributions? Mr. Alex.
Thank you, Ms. Bergson, that's kind of what I was thinking, I'm not sure what the difference is between somebody you hire for a year and a consultant. Most people don't, aren't interested in a job if they know they're going to be let go after a year, and the people who are, like me, are called consultants. I, I guess I wanted to raise the issue, I think there's been some great comments in terms of like, how this, a, a process that just looks at replacement cost of the, of the buildings as they are, I agree with Mr. Quisenberry and others, who pointed out that there probably needs to be sort of a strategic aspect in this too, in terms of how, not only what's it going to cost to replace these buildings, but at what point are the buildings going to stop being used, or how could we repurpose the buildings going forward if, if we need to? So I'd like to see that be at least something we think about. But I guess the biggest concern I have at, at doing the study, I think it's something we need to do, I mean, we need, we're going to need the numbers at some point, because we're going to have to budget for these expenses, but I think we could start looking at these expenses already. I mean, we know that we've been deficient in investing in ongoing capital maintenance, excuse me, ongoing capital replacement, and, I mean, it would seem like we could probably do some very rough rule of thumb calculations based on building age and square footage and some rules of thumb about industrial buildings, to determine whether we think that this is going to require, I know that we're setting aside $100,000 a year, or $1 million a year, or $2 million a year to meet these expenses, and that that's something that we could be attempting to do and look at the long-term financial implications of in the budget cycle before we have, you know, exact dollars and cents numbers, as far as this roof is going to need to be replaced in 17 years, and this boiler's going to be, going to need to be replaced in 18. So I, I guess we might want to look at this sort of incrementally, where you, you know, do some back-of-the-envelope calculations, just to see, because if we, if we determine that we have $100,000 to spend, and we do this study, and we know this study's going to tell us we need a million, then we need to acknowledge that structural problem and talk about ways to address that, otherwise, as I think Mr. James said, we're just going to put the study on the shelf, because it's going to say how we wish we could spend the money that we don't have. So I think the two tracks can proceed in parallel, but I'd like to start looking at this at a, sort of at a, at a macro level, based on just back-of-the-envelope calculations, because we're going to have to come up with this money, that the study isn't going to make the money appear, I guess is my point.
Mr. McGinty.
The comparison to that, that Chris just referred to, is that we spent pretty good money on a study for IT with Maximus, but didn't have the money to do the implementation of their ideal plan. So we still have that plan in place, it's a, it's a bit of a roadmap, but a lot of what they recommended, we just don't, didn't have the money to, to implement, and so, being careful moving forward seems, seems prudent to me.
Mr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Ellen, for the start in this process. I, I view this as a, a good start, and that eventually, we'll probably need to hire outside help, expertise. I would lean in that direction, because it would be very difficult to get somebody with all these disciplines in one person to come on staff with us, and it'd be very expensive, and at the end of that year, too, it'd be very difficult to let that person go. Once you hire a consultant and pay the bill, the consultant is done, he's gone. If you put somebody on staff, you're obligated, possibly, to him for many years and to his family after that, if he in fact stays on staff. So that's a good start to a rational approach to implementing a needed aggressive maintenance program for our buildings. Thank you.
In terms of this process, we've got the, a bit of a framework tonight, what do you project in terms of the point at which you would like the county board to take some sort of action? Because I, I don't think we would be at all ready tonight or even next month, because I think there's a lot of members who would like to contribute more information as they think about this. Do you have a, a timeline in terms of when you would like us to take an action, one way or the other?
I do not believe that we can even have anything that's usable for this fiscal year, this budget period coming up very shortly. So we have, you know, Deb and I have talked, we have roughly a, over a year to, to have this really put together correctly and have a working model that we can start funding. Most importantly, I need to know what direction the, the board would like me to go now and add these, research these items, add them, and just, if you'd like, I could find, do some more research on the things we've talked about and bring these back and see where we want to go next.
Yep.
And I, I would just add, and I think all the comments here tonight are completely appropriate, and we can certainly stage this and phase this, as the county board is comfortable with, with doing it. Just a couple of things I would point out, from a budgeting perspective, part of the goal of this is, we have, most of our buildings have been built in the last 15 years, and we don't have maintenance plans in place for maintaining those buildings appropriately. Therefore, we're not budgeting to do it. Therefore, we're maintaining these buildings on a shoestring every year without taking care of what needs to be taken care of. So I think we believed that the first step was to document the assessment, the conditions of these buildings, and what, what systems in these buildings will need to be replaced or maintained at certain levels, starting as soon as the study is done. We have done a study, you've seen it, Ellen has put together information that he can put together with regard to replacement of flooring systems and roofs, but he can't necessarily put together the information, because he's not an engineer, of HVAC systems. And my concern is, if we go with only limited information and not the comprehensive information, and we really start budgeting, and it is at least a half a million dollars a year, probably, it's probably a million dollars a year that we are under budgeting for taking care of these facilities, at a minimum, so we have to find that money. We haven't found it, because we haven't had anything that tells us specifically we need to find it, and my concern is, if we don't do a more comprehensive assessment of the buildings, we'll find it, we'll budget it, and we may spend it on the wrong things. So that's why I believe we need a more comprehensive look at what our buildings need every year, starting, you know, next year, two years from now, whenever we can get it done, into the next 20 or 30 years.
Mr. Mitchell.
I think uses, because the changes, the evolution that's taken place now in technology use is probably a big, a big component of this, because what, the space that someone's using and the number of employees that are housed in a facility, I think, have bearing. But also, if you looked at maybe someone in a graduate program at U of I for this study, would that make any sense at all?
Question? I, I can't answer that question. It's certainly something that we can write up and check. Okay. Mr. Langenheim.
Doing something of this sort of just simple prudent foresight, if we don't do this, we're going to find ourselves in the same situation that we were in 10, 15 years ago, when the state told us we had to replace the jail, and the state told us we had to replace the courthouse, when the health department lowered the boom on the nursing home. We don't need to sail blind into an emergency, so we must do something here.
Ms. Holleyfield.
Well, I, this is exactly what we have been asking for. We've been asking for a comprehensive report, and I think, Deb, you're very right, we need to get a little bit more involved in this, so that we have the opportunity, as a board, as a county, to formulate a plan, because if we don't have these buildings maintained, then we're, as you said, going to continually fall into that, where are we going to get the $80,000 for the roof? So what this is, is a very beginning of what we have been asking for since I've been on the board and probably prior to that, is give us, give us the information that we need, so that we can make a more defined decision on how we fund each of the buildings when the maintenance has to occur. We all, we, we know it has to happen, we have to make a decision to get, we have to make a decision to get this done, because if we don't, we're going to continually chase our tail, and so I am definitely in favor of whatever it takes. If we have a consultant that comes in and assesses in a more in-depth HVAC, you know, the electrical, the roof, whatever it takes, I think that's... the electrical, the roof, whatever it takes, I think that's something that we need to have a much more comprehensive plan so that we put away for that rainy day, just like everybody else does. That's what we're being asked to do, and that's what we've asked you to do. So thank you for the beginning stages of this, and I hope that we, as a board, will start utilizing what we've been asking for, and that is a plan in place. Thank you.
I know Carol was next, but Mr. Carter hasn't had a chance, so I'm going to take it out of order slightly, if that's okay with Ms. Anna. Mr. Carter.
I thought when you build a building, the use of the building takes care of maintenance. When you build a building, if you have a fee charged, that fee should take care of your maintenance part of it. You don't leave that out. I don't know why you build a building and then don't put anything in there for the maintenance and the care of the building. The jailhouse should be part of that $36,000 you charge in there, man, for part of it. I don't, this, I don't know, it sounds kind of strange. I know with the other building, then don't put anything in there for the maintenance part. That's just like a rental, a house for renovation. You rent a house, part of that money, $1,000 assumption, go in the bank every month for maintenance. So to me, it's no big thing. It's no big thing. I don't know why you're making it difficult, but it shouldn't be that difficult.
Carol.
I want to just quickly follow up, and I agree with Mr. Carter, that you don't build buildings without putting maintenance in it. Don't make a lot of sense to me either, but since you guys are going to be here making this decision and next board, I would certainly recommend that you take Mr. Max, Mitchell, I'm sorry, recommendation to use the graduate students. We did at the historic post office building downtown Urbana, and we did get an assessment from them for the HVAC system. We also used the School of Architecture to do some remodeling inside of the building. So it's, and it didn't cost us a penny, not a penny. So this idea that we have to pay everything for professional services just doesn't fly well with me, but I won't be making this decision. I encourage the board members to look at your own resources in your backyard.
Kipler.
Thank you very much for this excellent start. I think everybody echoes that sentiment. What I'm most concerned about is this upcoming budget that we have to do for next fiscal year. You mentioned that this report may not be available, let's say, until sometime next year, well beyond the budgeting period. Is there a way to estimate or to give us an idea of the upcoming budget? If you could come up with something that would give us an indication of next year's? I know it won't be a full assessment what you have now, but kind of give us a number that could guide us for this budgeting session that's coming up so that we can somewhat plan for it next year, even without this report?
I can, I can try. I can see if I can come up with something. Obviously, some more research will be on that, be needed on that, but I'll, I believe so.
And that is intended to be part of the fiscal 2013 budget process. Irrespective of the board's action on this and what we do with this, the board is going to be asked to budget more for facilities maintenance in fiscal year 2013 because we simply haven't been taking care of things as well as we should. So that'll be part of the 2013 budget discussion.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. James.
Well, I was just going to say that when we did the bell tower, when we did it with the engineering firm that did that, we had stipulated in that contract that they give us some form of maintenance plan for ongoing upkeep of that brick and veneer and some other entity, stuff that was used within that building. But we have talked about some of that stuff, and I know John Jay and I have both seen, Deb, you've put together reports in the past where we projected air conditioning, heating systems, some roofs, the painting of this building, and I think some of the newer people just have never seen that, and the parking lots. We forget about the parking lots and some of the other things that are out there. But just like Lloyd said, to me, that's everyday stuff. I mean, I deal with it when I hear this stuff about, well, what's it going to cost? They can tell you something a day, and like I used to price heating systems and air conditioning systems, and some of those prices have come down dramatically because of the size of them now, and the, but the labor's more intense because what they got to do to install them. But on the flip side of that, they can give you the best estimate of what your life expectancy is, but you can put a new unit in today, just like when you buy a new car, and next year it's a limit. So it's all numbers, and Deb's absolutely right. The only thing I would say is just start fudging, put it in there, because you never know. This ground out here could crack tomorrow, and we'd have to replace that parking lot, even if they tell you it's going to last 20 years. So I think a lot of it's common sense. Yes, I hear all this expert stuff, but I think we have plenty of experts, and I still say the people that work around it every day know a lot more than somebody's going to come in and tell us what to do.
Any more comments or questions? I think this has been a very fruitful and useful discussion, because it's not over by a long shot.
Till the Yankees win.
Yeah. This is the beginning of this process. Thank you for working on this, both you and Deb. I think this is something that a lot of board members have concerns about. I know Mr. Mosier and I go way back talking about the need to cover capital improvements and capital maintenance, and hopefully, we're going to get there somewhere in our lifetimes. Thank you very, very much. If you could share with us the inspection report.
Starting on page 21 of the agenda is a copy of an inspection, the report that was given to me by Regional Planning Commission, and about this Brookins facility here. I'd like everyone to pay attention to page 21, the very first line that says, "All specifications are met for Illinois Accessibility Code and ADA. However, we took notice of a couple of maintenance issues." Well, through the remaining pages, I can explain that because in 2010, the ADA standards for accessibility design was updated and modified. So the, obviously, the minor things, we will, we are taking care of in-house, and they are either done now or will be in the process of being completed. On page, I believe it's 30, I really had to ask Cameron, Mr. Moore, about who are these guys and why are they here? Gives you an explanation why these people come in and audited our building, and because of the relationship between Regional Planning Commission and the fundings, the authorization programs, the CCDI was retained to review all accessibility issues at agencies that deliver, deliver the LIHEP and IWAAP, such as the Champaign County Regional Planning So that's why they were here, and pages 31 and 32 are some, some of the larger items they listed out. This is their report, and this is their, part of their inspection sheet. They will be coming back, I believe, at the end of the month to look at some of these items and see that they're, we are in compliance. I do not agree with what they consider can be reasonably be remedied within 30 days on a couple items, specifically the curb ramps. Regardless of that, I contacted some contractors and talked with VIP Plumbing to look at our, the restrooms in Pod 100 themselves only. This is pertaining to Pod 100, and a couple of people, I'm still getting estimates for adding the detectable warning strips at the front of our building to meet the 2010 ADA First estimate is $17,000 to complete those items. We have full compliance in Pod 400. It's possible that we could put up more signage and direct everyone from the very front of the building back to the men's restroom here, but the women's restroom does not have a, it has the same type of sink in Pod 400 as they have in Pod 100. So that's for your information. We're going to take care of most of this, and once I get some, some more information about a little better pricing, see how much we can do in-house and what we can, we have to ship farm out. Obviously, we do not have a licensed plumber on staff. It, the plumbing work would have to be done by one, so we need a contractor of some type, and so.
Questions from committee members? Mr. Maxwell.
Alan, how close are we to meeting the current ADA standards on the rest of our buildings?
I've got to refer back to their, their own, their own statement on page, on the very first part of the page 21. All specifications are met for Illinois Accessibility Code and ADA. Okay. The violations that they, about the detectable warning strips and stuff, I believe we would be grandfathered in. Now, can I, I cannot tell you, if we do not make these corrections as requested, what's going to happen to funding available to the Regional Planning Commission. I don't know what their requirements are. Maybe, maybe someone from their department could answer that for you. They're requesting for us to do this, but obviously, okay.
Hattie.
You have a gipped figure, thank you, of about $18,000. Is that just your guesstimate, or?
No, those are written estimates from two different contractors, one from, one-
To do all the work that's, that needs to be done outside of your own staff?
Yes, the curb ramps, correct.
Okay.
And the restroom grab bars, sinks, and the urinals, just to bring them in compliance.
Okay, and I'm assuming there's enough reinforcement in the walls for those grab bars to be put in?
There's two in the wrong position of the wrong size. From an old code, instead of being a 24-inch bar, they need a 36-inch-
Right, I read that, but I'm talking about the reinforcement within the wall to-
No, the walls are fine, I'm sure.
Okay, all right. And then my last question, obviously, is what is this doing to our budget, this unexpected $18,000?
It's not very good. I need to try to get this number down, and if I cannot, I'm going to have to probably come back and ask for a budget amendment to complete these items.
Deb, do you?
This was not anticipated in the fiscal plant budget for this year, and Alan is doing his best to accomplish what can be accomplished within that budget for repair maintenance line items, but it may require an amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Kipler.
I would just say that with respect to the ADA and whatnot, not going back to a previous action item, but it may be something to consider for future maintenance improvements for upcoming budgets in, in the future. Is it, in other words, do we need to be doing this for all of our buildings and making sure that we're pushing it now as opposed to waiting for someone to get audited?
Well, at least theoretically, our courthouse was supposed to be ADA compliant when we built it, as were several other buildings. The problem is that the ADA itself evolves. It's an issue.
We had a, we had a complete federal team from DOJ, was DOJ, wasn't it? Here last September, and they audited all of our buildings. We're still waiting for the report. So at some point in the future, you're probably going to see a report that would reflect, and they were looking at current ADA standards at that time.
Do you feel that report will be here before the budget process time?
I have no idea.
Mr. Azri.
A quick question, Alan. The curb ramps, detectable warning, was that estimate for ripping out the existing and replacing with new concrete? Do you know?
The estimate included, on the main walk, the, just a saw cut and the installation of approximately five foot by two foot. On the other ramp, that was a major removal of probably three quarters of a yard of concrete and a repour.
Okay. It wouldn't be possible, just with saw cuts, period, to provide the parallel grooves that are necessary?
We have the parallel grooves. The issue is there has to be a-
The design.
-truncated dome, a-
Okay.
-dimple in there.
Other questions? I have the chair's report. I have no report. Other business? I don't think we have any other business. Items to replace and consent agenda, there really are no action items, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kurtz to deal with environmental and land use. Mr. Kurtz.
Let's get started on, let's get out of the way the recreational and entertainment licenses. If we go to 8A, recreation entertainment license, hammer down truck and tractor pull, Champaign County Fair Association, June 2nd and 3rd, 2012, can have a motion.
So move.
So moved by Jeff Aaron, second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. B, recreation entertainment license, WBGL radio, vagin lot west of 4101, Fieldstone, Champaign, June 29th. That's not correct, 1012. That'd be 2012. Let's make that change. Yeah, 1012. I'm older than I look. Do I have a motion? Max and Stephanie. Any questions, concerns, discussion? Mr. Azalis.
Are there any apartments nearby?
No, it's pretty bad.
So the noise will not be affecting?
He's shaking his head no. I don't. There's your answer. And the other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Let's just go to the quick addendum on 1A, recreation entertainment license, Easton, Illinois, a bed for live bands, Rolling Acres Campground, Penfield, Illinois. Have a motion? I didn't hear the first. Stan and Ralph, any questions, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. All right, let's move on. On 8C, Champaign County Building Code Feasibility Study and Implementation Strategies, report by the Champaign County RPC, April 23rd, 2012, for information only. And Ms. Amonte, would you please give us a little bit of an update on that?
I have, Hyde, I have just a few words to say about this report, which is provided for your information only at this time. This report contains the necessary basic information for you, for the county board to begin to consider implementing a building code. The current county contract, for planning contract, contains action items to incorporate life safety code into our existing ordinances, and the Land Resource Management Plan contains priority action items to eventually adopt a building code at the county level. So this, this type of report is, is a necessary kind of basic information basis for you all to consider. The issues, the report contains all of the information you would need about state and local requirements, a review of the county's current permitting practices, qualitative description of the benefits, the types of benefits that could be expected from adopting a building code, and recommended next steps for the county board to consider, as is very important information. You would need cost-benefit type of numbers, and you would, we would also require a specific needs assessment of what exact types of building codes to consider for adoption. So those are the types of work plan items we would request for you to consider for the fiscal year 2013 county planning contract. I'll stop now, and if you had any questions, I could, I could be available for those. Oh, I did want to mention, I did receive some additional feedback from the Environmental Division at the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, some clarification from Jim Roberts, who is the environmental division person there. Just some corrections to terminology. For instance, the word sanitarians is no longer used. Those people are referred to as environmental health specialists. And a bit of additional information that we could use from this point forward to complement this report. So if anybody wants to see those additional comments, I have those available. Thank you.
First, I want to thank Ms. Amonte. This report, I don't know if you've had a chance to read through it, quite extensive, and a lot of work was put into it. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Amonte on this, or let's, hold on a second. Steve first, and Mr. Jay, go ahead.
Have we looked at how many of these little towns got building codes in the mile and a half, and how many of them are enforcing them, other than Mohammed? I'm not sure there are any of them. Every one of them's probably got a different-
No, that, that particular issue has not been examined. This, if the county did adopt a building code, it would apply to the mile and a half jurisdiction completely, except for annexation agreement parcels. I know that much.
I don't believe it, because I know Urbana's done it in the mile and a half without any permission from us. permission from us.
It could be that those were parcels to be annexed with a pre-annexation agreement. Okay. Yeah, I haven't looked into that particular question.
All right, well, she can get an answer for us on that, which is Susan.
Well, while we're on that, if she could elaborate a little bit. If they do have a pre-annexation agreement, they can use their building code, Champaign-Urbana, and those that have it. Is that correct? So a good portion of the billing area in our county is already under building codes, because it's in the one and a half mile jurisdiction of those who have it already?
Well, individual parcels would be under pre-annexation agreements, not areas, not entire one and one-half mile jurisdictions.
Okay. The other question I have is, do we know how many serious incidents we've had of violations that caused either health hazards or other physical damage, other than excluding Cherry Orchard? How many of those have we had last year, excluding Cherry Orchard?
Again, a study to that specific question has not been completed. There have been previous concerns expressed at these meetings about life safety codes that, in the thirteen or so recreation and entertainment licensed facilities in the county. There, there is some concern there.
Well, there are life safety codes, are there not, already by the Fire Marshal Office and other entities?
Right, as to whether or not those codes are-
Enforced or not. So it's a matter of enforcement, not a matter of the codes not being in place.
Oh, it's just unknown at this point.
That's fair. Thank you.
Stan?
Just to follow up on Jay's thing. Jay, I think the issue that you're raising there, if you don't have the codes, and when we go to court, we can enforce what we don't have. And to me, I know where you're coming with some of that, with these cities and these other small towns and these entities, but it's overlooked sometimes. I think it behooves the county to at least look at it, study it, and see if the need is there. It's coming, just like that bullet train's coming, so we might as well get on board and do the right thing.
Now, hoping for the bullet trains. Chris?
Neil?
Yes.
I apologize if this isn't really in the form of a question, but I wanted to follow up on some, on a concern I expressed during our caucus meeting and confirm that I was in fact correct about this. My understanding is that the, at the time, and I think I remember this discussion from when we first put this on the work plan, or when we last talked about this going on the work plan, is that the state of Illinois has a building code that went into effect last July, which deals with essentially everything that's not a single-family home or a duplex. And obviously, there's issues in terms of how that is enforced, even though the state doesn't have building inspectors wandering around Champaign County. So there's a, there's a question as to how effective the whole thing is. But I have the concern that this study really needs to, going forward, really needs to determine the extent to which the state building code potentially obviates the need for Champaign County building code, or the extent to which if Champaign County does someday end up with a building code, how it would interact with the state building code. Because, and Mr. Hall made some excellent comments to this effect during our caucus meeting, that there are already some jurisdictional confusion, issues arising in the county in terms of commercial property builders who are subject to the state building code, coming to the county and saying, hey, can I get a variance on this? And we say, no, it's not our code. So I think we need to, going forward, look very carefully at how this interacts with the state building code, whether in fact we need a building code at all, given the state has one, and how the two of them, if they both exist at the same time, would, would interact.
That we could do as well.
Yes, we've started asking those questions to the Assistant State's Attorney's Office and have gotten some feedback that supports that, that need also, for clarification.
Ralph?
My concern is with these fully urbanized areas close to the Twin Cities, parks of Champaign Township and Urbana Township, where we have houses, streets, the whole darn business. Some of them are on sewer, some of them are on sanitary stuff. This code would only apply to those facilities, those homes and so on, if, if there were, attempted to do any remodeling. It wouldn't, the imposition of this code would not require that they be retrofitted, right?
Well, retrofit issue and the additions and structural modifications is, is a gray area as to which code would apply, the state code or a county building. If we had a county building code, that would be the applicable code, depending on the jurisdiction of, of the building. So the Department of Public Health has state statutes that regulate enforcement of sanitary sewer connections and potable water supplies, and those are enforced by the county public health department regardless.
Steve, I'm going to go to Patsy. She hasn't spoken on this yet, and I'll come back to you. Patsy?
Yes, something that was raised in our caucus and wondered if this could be part of what you look at, and that is fee structure, what it might raise in the way of budget, and then what that gives in the way of funds to implement should such a building code get approved by a county board. And then I have a request. The county board approved X amount of hours for Y projects, and I'm interested in how much of that time has already been spent, and what you project might have to be spent to go further on this-
Right.
...project.
To address your last question, that, that would be part of the June Cow agenda, committee of the whole agenda, when you are presented with a status report on the planning contract from the RPC.
Thank you. I, I think, Susan, that might be beneficial that, that we have some better understanding of what the state statute is, is how it's written, and what, what it actually says, because if I remember correctly, the state statute says, if you're in an area unincorporated that has or incorporated, that has no building codes, pick a code close to you. A municipality that has a building code, pick it. So I, I think there needs to be some clarification and, and some, some more educating, I guess, on what the state statute, if that could be part of your report also, please. Thank you, John.
Actually, yeah. I just want to say-
Oh, you want to answer it? Go ahead.
Well, the Illinois Residential Building Code Act is the first one you referred to, where if it's a new residence, the contractor is required to select a building code, or else there's a default one assigned. And that applies to new residential construction. It's questionable as to whether it applies to additions, modifications, or whatever.
It would be beneficial if we, if we could be up to speed on those issues?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Steve?
I would like some clarification on what a farm exemption's going to be. Is that going to be something that's going to the ZBA with a building permit? We, we can't define farmland, and we can't define a farm in the assessor's office to this day.
What, in the planning and zoning department?
I don't know where you're going to draw the line.
We can. And the state's attorney's office has given us some feedback that the building code, if the county chooses to adopt one, would exempt farm dwellings and farm structures. Now, the county health department doesn't have that type of exemption for their private sewage enforcement and inspections, and their potable water supply. That sort of doesn't get an exemption. But for the zoning and building codes, otherwise, there would be exemptions for farm dwellings and structures.
Okay. Steve?
Thank you, Alan. In line with this part of the conversation, I would respectfully suggest that we need to add a word in the middle of page forty-seven, where it says, "The report makes it clear that under state law, agricultural buildings, including agricultural dwellings, would be accept, exempt from a county building code requirement." We need to add the word in parentheses, "yet." Because it is going to come back and find our base sometime in the future.
Okay, Steve, John?
I'd like to change that word to forever. I think one of the things we don't want to lose sight of is there are multiple building codes in this country. And when we talk about a building code, until we see it in front of us, we really don't know what we're talking about.
That's why we want to do this feasibility study. We put that in specifically.
Forever?
Well, I haven't put in forever yet, but we put in that, that paragraph so that we understand where we are when it comes to state statute on agricultural buildings. Hold on, let me go with Carol, and then with Lloyd. Carol, please.
I just wanted to ask Ms. Monti if the building code that the county could pass could be specific to certain localities within the county, correct?
Well, we're talking the unincorporated areas of the county.
Okay. And then the second thing is the question on exemption for farmland, would that, is it just because it's farmland, period?
We're talking for buildings and structures, not land.
Buildings and structure, not, not the land.
That are used for agricultural purposes.
But only used for agricultural purposes. I wanted to make that clarification, because when I worked for a social service agency and went to some areas in the county where there was very poor housing in those areas, that would be a concern. That's a public safety concern, and I don't think it should have an exemption. But if we're talking about simply agricultural use, I think that could be specified.
Well, we can only do what the state allows us to do. We are a non-home rule county. So that's all laid out in the state statutes.
Lloyd?
You can answer, Guard Hill. Half Guard Hill, I think, is in the city. The other part is out. Now, when the inspectors go out there, they have a problem. You annex that in, then you start to getting your owner selling it to people that make rental facilities out of it. Then here, the inspectors go out and look at these buildings. Some of them have two-by-two framing in them, a lot of them. And I want you to tell me how you expect to renovate something, that that, it's ridiculous. Now, this poor guy, they come up and, if, if you don't get an honest seller to sell you that building, and have somebody looking out for your interest, first thing he goes to do is say, well, as it is. Now, here's the poor guy, don't understand all this. He buys that property. Don't you have a feeling for this, because he gonna get ripped. When the inspector put that, when he go out there and inspect that building and write it up, he gotta bring it up to code, or don't he gonna have to lie? They ain't sure as much as he been sure. Now, you have a problem there, and, and your buddy will, you know, try to make some fee book. We gotta do something. We got, we gotta do something. And I don't know why does somebody want a, a, a half million dollar house, because it's out there and, and building like a rat trap. To me, it don't make any sense. Poor little bitch, they don't know if they gonna do it and live at it, or be way out, and nobody going to annex it in town, where you going to get somebody else to buy his property? That's the whole system, and it's bad.
Thank you, Lloyd. Max?
Thank you. Susan, in, in your-
Could you speak up? I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit, please?
Yes. As we progress with these studies and this, as we come into the new budget year, at some point in time, I think we'd like to see, at least I would, what it's going to cost to drive a good enforceable building code to the county. Keeping in mind, we don't have any extra bucks, so it'll all have to be driven by a fee schedule. And I think that it would be appropriate that we have some idea what kind of fees we would be looking at to maintain an adequate and efficient county building code enforcement section.
If you look on, when you get a chance, I know it hasn't been out long, and it's a big, it's a big study, and it's hard for everybody to have the time to look through it. But there are fees that are listed in, in this study that show from other counties who have building codes, which is a, is some, as a role model to take a look.
And Mr. Maxwell, I can email you the section of this recommendation report that, of the report that addresses your concern that you just stated.
Mr. Chair, may I add to that? I have looked at that, and I noticed in one of our neighboring counties, the fee would cost for a, a new one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar home, add a thousand dollars to the cost of that home. I think these are things our people out there in, in the county need to know.
Are there any other questions? All right, then, I'd like to have just a straw poll here to move forward on putting it on the twenty thirteen work plan. All in favor, raise your hands to put it on the work plan. Sorry, could you be more specific, though?
We don't-
Oh, all we need to do is-
Okay, we're going to ask for a proposal from the RPC on a building code feasibility and the cost involved in the twenty thirteen work plan.
Right. Thank you. And, and this is presented for your information at this time, so.
Well, I'd like to have those who would like to move this forward, please raise your hand. Okay. What's that? Okay. Please, raise your hand high, because I can, so I can see. Okay, thank you. Eleven, twelve, thirteen. Didn't pass for a majority. All right, let's move on to D. The annual review of Champaign County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, for information only. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay, thank you. Then finally, request preliminary recommendation to county board for approval to Champaign County zoning ordinance and zoning case seven oh one dash AT dash eleven to amend certain wind farm standard conditions. If you go to page fifty-one, just so that I could, you know, understand the protocol here. The standard protocol is for the committee to make a preliminary recommendation on a proposed text amendment at the first committee meeting following a ZBA recommendation, and then defer the final recommendation to the county board until the next regularly scheduled committee meeting, that will be June fifth. The deferral of the final recommendation is intended to give municipalities and townships with planning commissions one month in which to provide comments or protests. If the committee makes the final recommendation on the case at the June fifth committee meeting, the case will go to the full board on June twenty-first. So, I'm sorry.
A motion.
Carol? Okay, second. Lorraine? Can I have all in favor of-
Discussion?
I'm sorry, discussion. Any questions or discussion, sir? Chris?
Yeah, I'd like you to speak to this.
Sure.
Look, you to speak.
Want me to speak to him? Oh, okay. What we're doing-
Give us your one paragraph on why we should support this or not.
One quick paragraph? Because I love wind farms. No, just, this, all this is, is, is to help with approval to, there were changes made to the ordinance, and some of those changes were recommended by the county board. It went to the ZBA, those recommendations, some of them include a noise study on a regular basis. And, and so what we're doing is correcting some of the inadequacies of the ordinance. So we want to have the municipalities take a look at it. It's, it's quite simple, it's small, there's not many changes. And of course, we have to give them the opportunity for a thirty-day comment and opportunity to protest or make comments. Then they'll come back to us for discussion and to move forward. Thank you. You're very welcome, Chris. Patsy?
Yes, thank you for the work on this, and I appreciate that several of my suggestions have been included.
Yes, they have.
However, there is one that was not included, so I move to amend section I, number three.
All right, which page?
Six.
I'm sorry.
Page six in the ordinance.
No, I think it's, well, it's numbered in a weird way here. It says 6-28 in the ordinance copy that I have here.
Do you have a page number?
Yeah, it just says 6-28 in the ordinance copy that I have here. No. It's right here. I, three, okay. Do you have it?
Is it in the agenda?
No, it's the wind ordinance here.
So what do you want to, what is your motion?
Can I finish? And I'll read it to you, okay? I'm amending a section of I, three. It reads, "To begin with, the applicant through the use of a qualified professional as part of the citing approval application process shall appropriately demonstrate compliance with the above noise requirements." I would like to add to that, and will repeat this process upon completion of the project.
Are you reading out of the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, I'm reading out of the ordinance.
Okay, and you're, what paragraph of 614 are you reading? Paragraph I?
I, three.
We did not amend paragraph I as part of this text amendment, so that change was not included in this legal advertisement.
I know that, I understand.
You cannot add it at this time.
I cannot?
Well, not in accordance with Illinois law. If you would like to have another text amendment, direct us to do that, and we will.
Well, if somebody will second it, I'll give the reasons for raising it. Thank you.
Point of order, I'd like to know if that's allowable or less our program.
It's just for information only.
This is not on the agenda, I believe.
That's correct. It's not, it's not on the agenda. What's that? It's not on the agenda, and we can't move on.
Okay.
We'll have to go on to the next agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. James?
So if I can understand the intent tonight, there's a desire to get any other concerns about this out from the board members, perhaps take a straw poll now to make sure this is going in the right direction.
Correct.
And then perhaps a board member defer it to give that 30-day period that's required.
Thank you, James.
Is that correct?
Yes, correct. That is correct. Are there any other questions or discussion before we take the straw poll?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I understand this, and I apologize. What we're doing here this evening is we are actually giving the opportunity for the municipalities to have an opportunity to actually fight any type of a ordinance, or to get more information, or to protest against them, so they now have 30 days based on the noise, the flicker, or it's just the noise that permeates from the wind farms.
Yeah, and critically, until you give some sign of support for this ordinance, the municipalities have no idea what you're actually gonna vote on.
Right.
And so that's why we'd like to have a straw poll tonight. We'll contact the municipalities. In fact, most of them aren't interested, but there are some that follow all of these cases. And so we'll give them 30 days in which to wrap up their decision about whether or not to protest. But it's just the things that we're changing. It's not what the ordinance already says, it's what we're wanting to change it to.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Carol?
I know we did a change in the wind farm ordinance maybe a couple months ago. I'm just, I'm not, this is the one that we changed, and now we sending it back?
Yeah, in January, you directed me to make these changes.
Okay, thank you.
There were some things left open-ended, and we dealt with those as best we could. And so now it's back to you for reaffirmation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So let's take the straw poll. Can I please have your hands high, so that we can move this thing forward? All right, that's a majority. Thank you. And James?
Mr. Curtis, I would like to defer consideration of this to the June Cow, which I believe will be on June 5th.
Thank you. James first, John the second. Second by Michael. Any discussion on the deferral? All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion. Did I hear an aye back there?
One aye.
One aye. Okay. Nothing goes to the... Okay. And finally, we have the monthly report. It's on your desk for April. I'd like to ask that we place that on file. Can I have a motion, please? Any discussion, motion first? Who's the first? Tom, second, James. Any discussion on the report? All in favor placing it on file? Opposed? Motion carries. I have no other business, nothing to be placed on the agenda. What, John?
Mr. Chair, do I may ask, did you do addendum number two?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Addendum.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. We have one more addendum right here. 1A, landscape, this is for information only, actually. So it's a landscape recycling center permit notification for request to reorganize compost area. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? Ms. Petrie?
Yes, is there any economic value to the county for this agreement?
Point of order, this is strictly a notice so that people can comment on the item within 21 days, the date of its release. So if you have any comments, you should mail them off to the address as listed in the addendum.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? All right, that's it for ELOC. We move to, there's Coward for Highway.
Good evening. The first thing on highway and transportation is the county and Towahia Motor Fuel Tax Frame for April 2020. Moved by Tom Betts and seconded by Lloyd Clark. It's open for discussion. C, nine, all in favor, aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, the next thing is the county engineer's report.
Okay, item B, we have a petition from Bob Sherman, Hensley Road District for a replacement of a culvert located on Duncan Road in Hensley. Estimated cost of replacement is $33,000, of which the county would be responsible for one-half of the cost of that replacement out of the county bridge funds. There is a map on page 86 which shows the location of that box culvert replacement. It's a small structure, but definitely is in dire need of replacement. The rebar and the concrete are rotten in the structure, and it's something that he would like to do yet this summer.
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded, and it's open for discussion. Mrs. Allen?
Just two quick questions. One, do you actually quote these things? How do you get the value of this, the cost?
The cost value is, from historical costs, as far as the actual labor of putting them in, and then we get quotes on the actual box culverts from different culvert manufacturers.
Oh, okay. And the second part of this was, I just forgot it. I'll come back.
Alan, Curtis, did you have anything to say?
Thank God.
Okay, Carol?
He came back. I'm sorry, I know this is a short, little piece. On your plan, you have a plan for replacements of roads, county roads and highways.
Right.
Where does this fall in the importance on that plan?
Well, as far as, that plan is generally for the county roads. The county bridge fund is actually by statute set up to aid townships in replacement of their structures, so we take recommendations from townships for these smaller structures, because a structure of this size is not inspected on a routine basis by the county because it's so small. So when they find these issues, they bring them to us. I would say this would be a high priority for the township as well as, you know, across the county for any township, because this is a pretty heavily traveled road for a township road, and the culvert is definitely in dire need of replacement.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
The next item, has Bill stepped out? Mike? Okay. Next item is City of Urbana's Phyllo Road Project. Mr. Gray, the Public Works Director for the City of Urbana, has requested through my office that the county participate in the reconstruction of Phyllo Road, and he's here to give you all the details of that project. So, Bill, if you would take it away, that'd be great.
Thanks, Jeff. My name is Bill Gray, Public Works Director for the City of Urbana. About 16 years ago, the county had approached the cities about a jurisdictional transfer of Windsor Road, which is between Race Street and First Street. And through that process of the cities taking on that roadway responsibility, which was built around 1990 or so, that led into the beginning of a fringe road agreement. And what is in your packet is copies of the details of those decisions made by the cities in the county back in 96. And what both cities did is outline some of the projects that may be anticipated in the future, including Lincoln Avenue, North Lincoln Avenue, which is a project that we have already intergovernmental agreements working on now, and South Phyllo Road. And just a little background, in 1996, 95, when these discussions were taking place, the Atkins Group had not even acquired the acreage in Urbana at that time. So on the east side of Phyllo Road, south of Windsor Road, that was, except for the Deerfield Trail subdivision, that was all in the county. And on the west side, of course, that was 100% in the county. Since 96, then, the Atkins Group has bought, developed, and the Pines is there, as many of you are familiar with. And then south of the Deerfield Trail subdivision, Carl Hill has developed what's called Southridge, and that's phases five, six, seven, and eight. Anyway, if you've driven on Phyllo Road, it is a low-type roadway, chip-and-seal roadway. It has seen better days and is in need of some repair. What we plan to do is basically take that top 12-inch of material, which is a combination of oil and chip and dirt, and grind, and add some cement to stabilize, and come up with a new 12-inch working platform, and then put about a four-inch hot mixed asphalt overlay over it. We're gonna stay within the existing right-of-way that we have in this area. Our engineers in-house have done the design, and we're poised to take the plans to IDOT for approval, that we're gonna use motor fuel tax for the Urbana portion. So that's a little background. Then the limits of the project, as in your packet, is just south of the Windsor Road intersection, where the concrete road tapers to the chip-and-seal. From there, about 3,600 feet south is the limits of the project. And that's basically our south corporate limit, is that extent. Our estimate of cost is around a million dollars typically in agreements. We put a contingency in there, so that's why you see a $1.1 million. We think that we'll receive favorable bids because of the bidding climate right now. Contractors are hungry for work, so we hope to be far under that, but we don't know for sure. Our request on behalf of the City of Urbana is reflecting back on this fringe road understanding, and then there's a more recent agreement, if you will, with the county and the cities with respect to dollars that are available for improvements. We're asking for a 50% participation for this project. There's been other examples of county-city agreements, currently North Lincoln Avenue, of course Olympian Drive, the O'Brien Drive intersection, there was, with the US 45, there was some participation in county-city funding. Merman Avenue, just outside this office here. And of course Windsor Road. The Windsor Road project is completed, we're almost fining that out. Actually, Jeff and I are waiting on a final IDOT invoice for that project. So there's been a lot of good cooperation of projects in the past, and our request is in keeping with what we had established in 96. We come asking for some help in rebuilding this road.
Okay, Tom?
Didn't know it was an action item tonight.
Well, I, the intergovernmental agreement that the City of Urbana has drafted is in your packet. That has not been forwarded to the state's attorney's office. Quite frankly, I didn't want to get the cart in front of the horse and start working on a detailed intergovernmental agreement until we had some, I guess, vote of confidence from the county board that we should move ahead with this project. So I guess it's not an action item per se, but in order for us to get an intergovernmental agreement drafted and approved through the state's attorney's office and brought back to the county board in a timely manner, I would hope that I could get some direction on this tonight from the county board, because I know that the city would like to move ahead with this project and would like to feel comfortable with, you know, knowing what the county board's position is.
And Chair, may I ask a question? I guess my question was twofold. It is procedurally, I think we could probably ask for a straw vote on whether they wanted to proceed, but I have a substantive question in terms of, Jeff, do you support this project at a 50-50 ratio based on the number of feet that are in the county and the number of feet that are in the city of Urbana?
Well, the intergovernmental agreement, or the fringe road agreement, if you will, back, you know, you can read there item 10 in Exhibit A, page 3, that says improvement shall occur when the city engineer and the county engineer agree that such improvements are warranted to meet development needs, road capacity, safety, MUTCD warrants. Obviously, I've driven that road many times. It definitely meets all those criteria. I agree that such improvements are warranted based on this fringe road agreement. As far as funding of the project, I've talked with Bill, and he's aware of the fact that, you know, we haven't paid for Windsor Road yet, we still haven't fully paid for Curtis Road yet, so this isn't anything that we could budget for and pay for in the current fiscal year's budget. So it would be perhaps something that would have to be spread over at least a couple of years in order for us to be able to budget our motor fuel tax money to pay for the project.
Thank you, that's the question.
Yeah, Jeff, the original fringe road agreement had the amount of feet, because at that time, Urbana just came to about 1,000 feet shorter than where they're going now. First, does the fringe road agreement have to be changed? Do we have to approve a change of the fringe road agreement? Because it's specific in its footage from Windsor South. I know there was about, I was told by, when we went to take a look at this, that it was like originally 23 or 2400 feet, and now we're talking about 3,500 feet, which is an additional 1,000 feet that is not in the fringe road agreement. Do we have the authority to just change that at this point? Or does the fringe road agreement have to be updated?
Well, I think through the intergovernmental agreement for Phyllo Road, you have the authority to put any kind of language that you want to in that particular agreement. I don't think the fringe road is an all-encompassing thing that you have to...
You say we don't have the money? You say we don't have the money for this project at this point? Is that what you're saying?
I did not budget for this, this year, for sure.
And we still owe for Windsor and Curtis? How much do we owe on both of those, do you know?
On Windsor Road, we're about roughly $700,000 that we still owe and on Curtis Road, about $600,000. And the only reason I haven't...
This is all coming out of the motor fuel tax?
That is correct.
And we're going to add another half a million?
Now, the Curtis and Windsor jobs are budgeted for, but this road obviously is not. So, if you look at my, kind of my long-range MFT balance sheet, the Curtis Road and the Windsor Road projects were supposed to happen this year as far as us paying for them. 2013, 2014, you know, we start seeing some dollars that need to go into the Lincoln Avenue project. It's really 2015, if the Lincoln Avenue project were to be constructed in 2015, where we see another significant contribution to fringe road projects around Champaign and Urbana.
So, how do we, I mean, the motor fuel tax has been decreasing annually now for the past three or four, five years, or three years?
I would say it's very steady right now. It decreased for a couple of years and it's holding...
Where are we in those numbers?
We're at about $2,750,000 a year in motor fuel tax monies.
So, this will eat up, Windsor and Curtis will eat up almost two-thirds of that?
Those are prior commitments, yeah. That would be roughly half of it, yes.
And what other plans do we have for using that motor fuel tax in this budget year for our roads in the county, besides fringe roads?
County highways eight and 30, which you've passed a resolution to go ahead and do, that is a significant project that we received TARP money, which is truck access route money in order to upgrade that project. So, that is our major project for this year. We have not bid it yet. We plan on bidding it in June, once the plans are developed and we can get it out on the streets.
Thank you.
Okay, Maxwell, Dan, Quinn, Barry.
Thank you. The April 1996 agreement, and Mr. Curtis has already alluded to it, between the County-City of Urbana called for the improvement of Philo Road from Windsor to the south line of Deerfield Trails subdivision, a distance of .48 miles. This proposal would have us agree to add another, almost a quarter of a mile. I am willing to work with my colleagues from Board Districts Three and Four and the city to assist the city with this project and possibly others in the future. However, I want to mention, I would like to mention, that our suburban villages and rural areas also have a growing backlog of needed transportation projects. I would like to see this board and future boards work with all urban and rural areas of this county to achieve an equitable and effective distribution of the county's very limited transportation resources on a case-by-case basis.
Dan Barry, and then you, Alex.
Okay, I got a couple of questions here. Maybe, Bill, you can perhaps answer this. Looking at this plan, I see that it's going to, it's obviously going to the edge of the corporate limit. Why not, if it's a fringe road, you know, into the county, why aren't we taking it all the way down to Curtis Road at this point?
Well, the good news is, first of all, it's the Urbana Township Road Commissioner, Jim Prather. The road condition is actually in very good shape, except for at the immediate intersection. And we're probably going to work with him to do some milling, resurfacing work as part of our contract to do work right at Curtis and Philo Road. But actually, it's on a hill, it has good drainage. This area where it ends actually is in a lower area. If you've driven by there, the drainage is pretty poor. We're going to improve that with some crossroad culverts. The road just remarkably is in much better shape and chip and sealing is all that's needed, is kind of a more routine maintenance.
And then, my next question is, the fringe road that I use in this area all the time is Race Street. And it's in not very good condition, south of Meadowbrook Park, which is basically, I would guess, the corporate limit again. Where does Race Street fit in Urbana's long-term plan as far as improvements? Or, Jeff, if you could mention it, where does it, does it fit in our long-term plans?
As far as the county's concerned, where the corporate boundaries end, that becomes a township road. So, it's not in our purview at all as far as a project. I know Bill's got some studies they've been doing on Race Street, though.
Yeah, I think in the near term, it's probably going to have a chip and seal, one or two applications of chip and seal in the next three years or so. It's probably what I, what I see Race Street, the type of work that's going to happen there, south of Windsor Road, north of our corporate limits.
Okay, no projected change in width for that?
No.
Because there's a lot of traffic using that these days. Then, the last question, I guess, you kind of answered this, Jeff, but what is committing to this going to displace? What are we going to end up putting off because we didn't have this on our horizon until a month or so ago?
Well, through our pavement management system, Applied Research Associates does for us, we've got a major project that I've actually requested, a $3 million highway safety improvement project on the road, I guess you'd call it Mattis, extended all the way up to Route 136. That's about a six to seven million dollar job. So, are we going to displace that by a $500,000 commitment here? No. But could it displace some maintenance that we would want to do, like some seal coats and some things, some smaller overlays? Yeah, it could. But I don't see it displacing a large project that we're trying to accomplish in the near future.
Thank you.
Okay, Alex?
I just want to make sure we've got a handle on the funding for this. I mean, Jeff, you're saying, I mean, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the fringe road agreement is more than the sum total of these few projects, right?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the fringe road agreement is effectively an agreement going forward saying that the county will obligate a specific portion of its motor fuel tax revenue to projects that are considered fringe roads, essentially putting that money at the joint, under the joint control of the cities and the county to negotiate how that's going to be spent going forward. But the idea is there's a commitment there to spend, you know, some portion of the motor fuel tax money on an ongoing basis for these fringe roads. Is that fair?
There was a resolution passed by the County Board stating that a few years back, yes.
And obviously, with the timing of these projects being what it is, you know, some years you're going to spend more than others, some years you're going to build Lincoln Avenue, some years you're going to build a Windsor Road, some years you're going to build nothing, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess it's a timing issue. I mean, it's two questions, right? One is, do we have the money to do this now? And it sounds like the answer is no. We couldn't write a check to the City of Urbana today if they sent us an invoice, right?
Right.
But do you feel that going forward, this is, essentially, this amount of money is appropriate based on what we understand our commitments to be under the fringe road agreement? In other words, this is just an issue. We don't have the money, right? It's legitimate that we're spending the money, we just don't have the money this year. Is that, is that what you're hearing?
Based on the resolution that the board passed, this is a legitimate request from the City of Urbana. We do not have the money to appropriate for this project this year.
Okay. And Bill, how does it help you if we agree to support a project and don't have any money? I mean, I assume the city would, the city would front the cost for this and expect reimbursement down the road? Is that how we're looking at doing this?
Actually, historically, the city and county have done both to each other. For example, Mermon Avenue, we paid over a three-year period of time. There's been projects where there's an understanding of cash flow. So, the answer is yes. We would pay, you know, upfront, whatever the cost of the project is, with the understanding that it would be paid back in two or three years or whatever that cash flow would work out. We understand that.
I appreciate the clarification. I mean, I'm supportive of this project because I think it is within the spirit of, the spirit, if not the letter, of the fringe road agreement. I mean, there's an issue of, you know, how many feet were anticipated to be done on this road when the original, the 96 memorandum of understanding was drafted. But if we go back and look at that memorandum, it doesn't specify the standards of construction. It doesn't say how wide it's going to be. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of flexibilities in these agreements. And I look at this and see that, you know, the county, it's probably appropriate for the county to participate in this. So, I'll be supportive of the project, assuming that Mr. Blue believes that the cost is appropriate and that we can, you know, that it'll be in keeping with our, with our, holding up our end of the fringe road agreement in the long term.
And they're not building a superhighway. I mean, I think the fix that they are trying to use is an appropriate fix for the amount of traffic that this road carries.
Okay, McGinnity. Okay, Patsy, Carol, and Steve, did you want to talk? Steve knows you. Okay, Patsy?
Thank you. I have a couple of information questions. I did my homework today. I did go out and drive the road again. I have driven it previously. I need better understanding why this has popped up to the top of the repair list when I also drove Windsor Road to get over to that part of Philo Road. And I, I look at the needs on Windsor Road in relationship to the needs on this road and I, I have a little trouble understanding this priority right now when we have so many other roads, both in the city, whether it's fringe agreement or the county roads or any of this, in the expenditure of our road monies. It's nothing, I don't have anything against improving roads. I just want to understand this.
Well, you've opened up a sore topic for me, but I'll just share with you a story...
Is it time for a break or something?
No, it's okay. Windsor Road was constructed around late 80s and it has cancer and it's called alkali silica reaction, or ASR. And it's wearing its ugly head for the last, at least, five years. And it's also shown up in the Windsor Road portion in Champaign and actually for a lot of other pavements. I think we're more knowledgeable now with concrete mix as to prevent that currently, but it's just an alkali silica reaction. It occurs and the freezing and thawing and moisture doesn't help and we have these sudden failures. So, we have about a multi, well, we have a multimillion dollar problem. It's part of the reason why we need a local motor fuel tax, to be quite frank with you, because although we built that road with 50% federal funding back then, we have those dollars committed for other things. So, that's a big situation that we're going to have to address in the years ahead. So, yes, it is in poor shape and we're not proud of it, but typically, we have concrete pavements, some that are 70, 80 years old that have virtually had no maintenance on them. The poster child would be Central Avenue between Park Street and University Avenue as an example. It was constructed in 1930s and it's, we haven't touched it. So, concrete can last for a long time. This situation is not a good example, but Windsor needs a lot of help.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Blue what the process, since you won't be, you'll probably be looking at this as a budget, for the coming budget.
Right.
What the process is at this point to get the, the current agreement to the State's Attorney and get, you know, just get it approved in that regard?
Well, I'd like to bring it to the County Board this month, so the State's Attorney would have a couple of weeks and Bill and I would have a couple of weeks to make sure that the intergovernmental agreement is, is going to be approved through council and I would bring it back to the County Board this month for approval of the intergovernmental agreement, if that's the will of the County Board.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can I follow up with that? I don't understand, if we don't have the money in the current budget...
Right.
The process and timing, I don't quite understand why it would not come at a later time after the budget process is taking place.
Well, actually, in the intergovernmental agreement, it would state how the dollars would be paid back over time. So, we would figure that out going into the intergovernmental agreement, that in 2014 or whatever the years are, we would pay X number of dollars based on the total construction costs with the City of Urbana. Obviously, the city would like to know if the county is in favor of moving forward with this project because they actually have plans relatively done and are ready to send them to IDOT for approval.
Okay, Stan?
Well, I just wanted to say, I think a couple of years ago, if my memory serves me right, we had a big discussion about this and we were given a projection of how far out we were with the fringe agreements and the money. And at that time, there was some talk to set aside some more funds as we went down the road to do the county roads that are in needed repair. And we all know that money is drying up and it's getting tight and I heard what Patsy said and Alex and them up there. And I know, like, that road I spoke about, that I forget the number, is it 24 that goes toward Gibson City or...
23.
23?
Yes.
For some reason, I was on 24, probably. But that road is horrendous.
Right.
And, you know, some of these roads, like I just heard Mr. Gray say, you know, we always hear these opinions and what's right and wrong, but we don't know why a road may last 60 years and then this new stuff that we're told is the best and the greatest falls apart in two. But my point being that I know we need to help each other and it's good that we help each other, but I think sometimes that the roads that we have the oversight over, in my estimation, and for the people that travel, granted, it's not the hundreds that travel within the cities, they get overlooked. And I think that we really need, like we're talking about a capital improvement plan for our buildings and our campus, we need to really look at all of our roads and make sure that we have enough money down the road to take care of those. Now, I'm not saying I'm against this because I think it is probably needed. I don't travel that road for whatever reason, but I do think that, you know, we really need to stay focused on what we, the county government, is chartered to do and make sure that we got our duction row before we keep expending money like we did and we're out in 10 more years and can't do anything. Thank you.
Jeff?
All right, just a quick question. So, this, assuming we go forward with it, the intent is purely just to repave the road, keep the current intersections, the intersections that they are today, there's going to be no modification of intersections, anything like that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, James?
One more quick question. Looking at the map, the edge of the city is significantly south of the last intersection that you turn off on. Do we, do we know, you know, what the developers' plans are for opening up that further south there?
Yeah. Actually, that last phase, if you will, of the South Ridge subdivision hasn't been fully built out. I know the developer has recently built some roads and selling more lots and building some homes there, but there's actually a road at the far south end of that subdivision that would intersect with Philo Road and that would be actually some, well, it'd be kind of a main east-west roadway through that subdivision. It's not built yet.
Okay.
Right.
Is that the one that's called Horizon Lane on the map there?
It doesn't sound right, but...
I think it's right there on where the blue line...
On the blue line?
Is it on the south end of the project there, Bill?
Hillshire Drive. Hillshire Drive will go all the way east, excuse me, west to Philo Road.
Hillshire, east of Myra Ridge there, would come all the way west over to Philo Road eventually.
Right, yes.
Okay, Jonathan, name Astro, name Patsy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I personally have to admit, I use this road quite often and it is in dire need of repair. And I agree with that. I can support this project, but I think the City of Urbana, Mr. Munson, needs to know that, that this is kind of a thing that sprung up on the county and, and I think the City Council needs to understand that. The county can't handle too many of these, these pop-up little projects. In fact, this is probably it. I know it's the fringe road agreement, but the county also has the power to say yea or nay. So, I'll support this, but I think the City Council needs to understand that.
Yeah, Astro?
Since, you know, the cities of Champaign and Urbana are responsible for most of the road money and they don't get what they put into it bad, I think, you know, saying we should only concentrate on the county roads and not on the fringe roads.
I think you might, Astro.
I think, saying that we should concentrate only on the county roads and not on the fringe roads when the cities maintain their own roads and are basically paying for most of our roads as well, I think it behooves us to observe the fringe road agreement. our roads as well, I think it behooves us to observe the fringe road agreement, you know, pretty reasonably, in justice.
Patsy?
I have just a point of clarification on this new agreement, fringe agreement, that will be brought to the board. As I'm reading the 1996 version, it says payment is required by this agreement within 35 days. So, I'm, and you're alluding to two or three years. So, that paragraph will be out, and we'll have a change of that. Okay?
That is correct.
Hey, John, Jay?
I get frustrated every time we get to this motor fuel tax, because the city of Urbana gets theirs up here, the city of Champaign gets theirs up here, and Champaign County's clear down here at the bottom of the money that's given for the motor fuel tax, and they think they ought to have ours, too. They're already getting motor fuel tax, but now they want the county motor fuel tax, which was designed specifically for county roads. That's what it was for. And we got into a problem when we overcommitted. I hadn't been on a board very long, and we couldn't make our commitments. And thank goodness, Bill, to you and Champaign, you give us a little leadway so we could make our payments. Jeff come up with this resolution, that I'm going to ask that we review that resolution as soon as we can get it on the agenda for the Highway Committee, because I don't think we can keep this up, quite frankly. At some point, we're not going to be able to make all these commitments and still have the commitments for the county roads. I think we're obligated to support this, by the way, because of our prior commitment. But I'm thinking that we really need to bring that resolution back and review it, and make sure this is what we want to do.
Steve Moser?
Well, I was here in 96 when we signed that agreement. The original intent was with Champaign, that we were going to commit to Bloomington Road if they annexed the Kmart, where Home Depot is now. And this has led to North Prospect, it's led to Windsor, it's led to Lincoln Avenue, it's led to Cunningham. I know 12 years ago, I made a commitment to the mayor of Urbana that I was going to agree to move Windsor Road up two years on the QOT's list at the expense of Olympian Drive, because that was always project number one, that I don't know if it'll ever happen, or, you know. It amazes me, Bill, that you can stand up there and ask for a half a million dollars here and then want us to do more and more on Olympian and on Lincoln. We spent a lot of money on Lincoln north of the interstate, I don't know how many years ago, when Satter's Wake was trying to get the thing taken up there to build that road, and it, I don't know when you're ever going to build it, but Denny Unzinger committed way more money to both cities than we had to commit, because back when Ryan gave all that Build Illinois money, extra motor fuel tax, seven, eight, nine years ago, I'm getting so old I can't remember. Every time you come in here wanting more money for another fringe road, I am like John Jay, I get irritated, because you think Windsor's beat up from 130 into Urbana. You ought to live on that four-mile stretch between 130 and the whole, and the St. Joe Sidney slab, because that's a, that's a superhighway on an asphalt road, and that's exactly what you got down on South Philo Road. And why those people want to come in on Curtis and Turn is beyond me, but they do. Now, all of a sudden, they've discovered 150's so bad that they can't drive on it, so now they're all coming up Windsor from St. Joe and Catlin and who knows where. And the township's going to get to the point we can't maintain that. There's no end to it.
Hey, Lloyd Carter?
You've made a good point, but I try to go down these streets in the afternoon from four to five, and you can't hardly get out of them. Now, while I've been cooking up these roads, that's what you got to look at. So, I'm saying, if my fair is the other, they must be coming to work and going by. So, you got to provide for them. Now, you know, everybody got to give a little bit. I'd like to go down there and come on back home, too, but I can't, because they're crowded, line after line of red lights going out of town, or either coming to town. So, you got to look at it both ways. It's beneficial to those that live outside of Champaign, Urbana, and those that live in, which I think you know are using the road more than we do.
Okay, Jan Anderson?
Well, maybe someone could give some information, but I'm like Astro. My understanding is that Champaign-Urbana residents pay a lot of the motor fuel tax through the tax, maintain their own roads. We look at the whole county, but it seems like the county outside of the Champaign-Urbana area gets a lot of that motor fuel tax to maintain, I'm not sure how many miles of county road.
Well, between the townships and the counties, and the county in Champaign County, we have about 1,750 miles of roads. It's a lot of miles. It is true that the motor fuel tax apportionment is based on population, and the majority of the population, obviously, in Champaign County is in Champaign and Urbana. But there's also a lot of road miles out there that have to be maintained with the money that the townships and the counties receive. So, you can spin that about any way you want to, and I've seen it spun both ways. And, yeah. So, but some of, you know, it is based on population, the motor fuel tax distribution to the counties. I could have one mile of road, I'd still get the same amount of money as I do having 200 miles of road, because it's totally based on population.
Okay, Ryan?
There's a something, a concept that goes back to the days of Franklin Roosevelt, farm-to-market roads. The city depends upon the agricultural subbase for a good bit of its substance, so these roads really need to be maintained.
Okay, Maxwell, then Jonathan?
Correction, I think, unless they've changed the law, the county gets its motor fuel tax distribution based upon?
Motor vehicles registered, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, which equates to population, kind of. I mean, it's a similar number. Yeah, you're right.
Okay, Jonathan?
I'll pass, thanks.
Any more discussion? Okay, James?
Well, I was going to ask, what's our next step? I can't call the question, because we don't, don't have a question.
I'd like to have a straw poll to see if we should move ahead with the intergovernmental agreement and bring it back to the county board meeting.
Can we have a show of hands?
That's definitely a majority. Okay, I will work with Bill and the state's attorney and get the intergovernmental agreement drafted and brought back to the county board meeting this month. Okay. Moving on to Item D, which is termed on your agenda as a roundabout advisory vote. Now, this is on the agenda based on requests by a few county board members. This, I know there's been some discussion about why this item showed up on the agenda. It wasn't placed there based on my recommendation. I know that Lorraine had a few requests, and I did as well, and we talked with bias about putting this on the agenda, actually back in April, and we held it off until May, but this is, this is a request by some county board members to have an advisory vote on the proposed roundabout at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Olympian Drive. I sent out in the agenda packet what was termed at the top, a roundabout fact sheet, because Lorraine had requested that there be some information on statistics and so forth, not only in relationship to roundabouts in general, but also in relation to the roundabout at the intersection that's being proposed. So, hopefully, there was some information there that would help you come to a determination. I'm not sure where we're going with this exact agenda item, but...
Madame Chair, I wanted a parliamentary question on this issue.
Okay.
I wanted to ask two things. One is, if, is there such a thing that I haven't found called an advisory vote within our rules as a county board, and where that would be? And if this is not an actionable item of the county board, can we take a straw poll on something that is not actionable on the county board? I'm asking Mr. Deetz.
Actually, you have to ask the chair.
Oh, I didn't ask her first. Ask her first, but, you know, you ask the other ones.
Answer her question.
No, repeat it.
I, in looking at the agenda, I don't see an action item on the agenda. I see a fact sheet. I'm talking about within, within the actual content of the document. We have a list on the agenda, but you don't have a resolution.
There is no resolution, no.
Of any sort.
Point of order, we don't need a resolution at the committee level.
At a committee level, I didn't think so.
But if you look at what's on the, if I may, it looks on the agenda, it says, it says roundabout advisory vote. That would, to me, it says you're going to have a vote on the roundabout, and it's going to be advisory. Can you determine that to be something else?
I'd like to have actual record for that kind of vote in our procedures.
You do do those kind of votes when you adopt a resolution to advise the legislature about legislation that you may or may not agree with.
The resolution we're adopting, so I'm asking specifically, I'm not crossing my words.
No, I'm just saying, you do, not everything is written in the rules, but you have adopted, this board has adopted resolutions which could be considered advisory, because they'll take a position in opposition or in support of a particular...
But we don't have a resolution in this case who make advisory, is what I'm saying.
But you're only at the committee level here. If you take a vote, an advisory vote on a roundabout, then you'll have a resolution which would, at the county board, to vote on, which would be forwarded to the Urbana City Council, in my understanding, because they do have the authority to make this decision in opposition or support of a roundabout. Is that not what you intended?
Why don't, before we proceed, if we're going to do this, why don't someone put a motion on the floor and then have the discussion?
I've been waiting to be recognized.
Okay, James?
Pursuant to our agenda.
I'm sorry, point of order, there hasn't actually been a ruling on the two questions.
Madam Chair, I believe I have a floor.
The point of order has to be recognized. There's no ruling on the two questions that I raised on this, and I think it's out of order. These two issues I'm raising are specific, and those are asking the parliamentarians specifically, we don't have a resolution on this. Is there an advisory vote that can be taken where there's no actual resolution? Or a straw poll on an item that is not listed as action on this agenda?
Madam Chair?
I'm asking a parliamentarian for that, and that has to be ruled on before we move forward.
Okay, Tom, what did? I want to make sure I'm understanding exactly what you're saying. On the agenda, it says roundabout advisory vote. I agree that there is no written resolution whatsoever there, which, there's a fact sheet. I think it meets the requirements of the Adams County decision in that there's notice, that we, because that's what Adams County requires, there'd be notice to the members and to the public that you're going to take an action. What was the second question?
If there's no actual resolution, it's a fact sheet. We don't vote on fact sheets. It's not any...
The resolution would be, someone would say, I move X, Y, and Z, and then we would vote on it. That would be the resolution, and it wouldn't be a final resolution, because we can't take any final action anyway. So, it's in relationship to the advisory vote, which could be yes, no, or deferred or tabled. Is that helpful, Carol?
No, not really. I'm looking at the...
Then the chair needs to rule on the ruling of the parliamentarian.
Okay, I rule you correct, and I'm going to call on James Quisenberry.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. Pursuant to our agenda item, I would like to make the motion that the county board advises the city of Urbana that we would not like to have a roundabout at the intersection of North Lincoln Avenue and Olympian Drive.
Point of order?
Second.
Point of order. Robert's rule says that you're going to have a vote, you have to, it has to be affirmative. Yes, you vote for affirmative. So, if I may advise you, you should say, the board advises that you support a standard intersection and not a roundabout. So, that way, you're voting yes for what you want, and not the opposite.
Okay, I accept that adjustment to the language.
Okay, repeat it, what are you saying?
I move that the Champaign County Board advises the city of Urbana that we would prefer a three-way intersection at Olympian and Lincoln Avenue instead of a roundabout.
Second.
Is that right?
Can I speak to my motion?
All right.
I think we've talked about this at at least two meetings, maybe three, where I've heard this board and the public discuss that while everybody may, some people may agree, some people may disagree, I'm one who agrees that there is value in roundabouts. I cannot be convinced of the justification of putting one at this intersection, given its neighborhood, its usage, and so forth. This isn't a question of whether I think roundabouts are good or not. I have several intersections in Urbana where I'd like to see a roundabout that I'd drive through every day. I just don't believe that this one makes sense. I believe that there's a majority of county board members that agree with that, and therefore, I was supportive of us actually having a vote on this, so that we could advise our staff where the county board feels and what we think about this. Thank you.
Okay, Braden?
First of all, I think that from a parliamentary standpoint, this is a cluster. It is a mess, what we're trying to consider here. And a couple of other things along these lines. I'm surprised this is back with that. This is a clear opportunity to state a couple of opinions. One, you know, Jeff, I'm a little concerned about the term fact sheet in what was put together. I think that there are some, I've studied this issue and heard from so many people on the pros and cons of these things, that I think that fact is debatable in what was put together as clear fact sheet for us. I understand some of the stats and all that. What I remember is clearly in the public engagement portion of this program over at the Civic Center, the session on this in particular. I'll remind everyone again that all of the urban representation voted for roundabouts, and quite a few of those people were employees of the city of Urbana. All of the rural representation, who are the people not only living out there, but farmers, et cetera, voted against it. Talked with several of the farmers to try to understand also the difficulties and whether, you know, I'm, I am more prone to believe the people who will have to be up that way moving big machinery. Understand, I've heard from so many people, and please call me again, I'd love hearing from you all, about how roundabouts fix all this, but for that particular location, I think a stop sign would work just fine for the next 25 years, and that we can consider a roundabout when that would be the greatest thing ever at that time. Like how I emphasized with a proof of concept, to stop at Lincoln and not go all the way out to 45, I think that we need to see that entire corridor develop to justify the need before the expenditure. This is something that, I think that this board has stated very clearly multiple times how we feel about the roundabout, and yet we're dealing with it again, hopefully for the last time tonight. I really hope that that's the last time tonight. I thought that we'd stated it very clearly. If we need to say again, no, really, no, really, 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 we really think that roundabouts are a bad idea, I haven't heard, hopefully there are some here that think otherwise, because last I knew, I haven't heard anybody say that it's a great idea on this board. So, maybe... So maybe somebody will, that's great. Thank you.
Satisfy his desire to hear somebody say something kind about roundabouts.
Would you wanna be the one to say it?
Yes, I'm here to say that.
Okay.
First, first of all, I'd like to establish...
That's gonna be in the paper tomorrow.
First of all, I'd like to establish my credentials, such as they are. I have actually participated in the laying out of a town site. I have an engineering degree. I have evolved in my attitude towards roundabouts, like everybody. I have a conservative streak, and the first times I went into, into roundabouts, I was driving on the right in Ireland, and it was somewhat ghastly. I have since driven on roundabouts in France, in Spain, and in Colorado, and elsewhere. I originally was opposed to the idea of a roundabout. However, after considering these so-called facts and consulting in the literature and with engineers of my acquaintance, I am convinced that roundabouts are, one, less expensive, less consuming, less, lesser consumption of land, much, much safer. If you're slowed down to get, go around a roundabout, you're not gonna piece somebody or broadside somebody at 60 miles an hour and send them to kingdom come. They are a good thing from an engineering and a social point of view. Therefore, I see no reason why we should not build a roundabout out there. This Lincoln Avenue, Olympian Drive, crossing of the railroad is clearly, the time for it has come. We had an input from, from one of the asphalt people out there this evening. It's time that we go ahead and do it, and this is the most efficient and least expensive and least consumptive of space, whatever. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay, Alex, and Sally, I mean Stephanie.
Jeff, I wanna just go back and understand the county's role in this project. This is not gonna be a county road.
No.
The county's not putting any money into building this roundabout.
That's correct.
And the county's responsibility here is limited, other than spending a lot of time talking about it, it's county board level and our, and our staff's time. Our responsibility is limited to being the mechanism by which the city of Urbana can acquire right-of-way to build this project. Is that a fair statement?
If the acquisition of the land was done favorably, which means you can sit and negotiate and come to a negotiated price and buy the property, the city of Urbana would not have to ask the county to be a part of it whatsoever.
Okay, so our, it's...
Our rule would be if condemnation proceedings...
If there has to be condemnation, we're the ones who, who do it.
That is correct.
What are the implications to the county? And what will you do differently tomorrow going forward, based on this vote? I mean, will this mean less expenditure for the county to acquire land? Will this mean, you know, as a county board, what, what difference does this make to the county?
I think the city of Urbana, as well as, as the highway department, you know, I'm trying to negotiate in good faith some land, squier property out there. And if the county board chooses not to support a roundabout, and in turn takes that choice into, if you build the roundabout, we're not gonna vote for condemnation, and we actually need to go to condemnation, then that could be a really big issue in the project. And I've got inklings of that from some folks on the county board, that if we advise the city of Urbana that we don't want the roundabout, yet the city of, the city of Urbana goes against our advice, and we come back to the county board to vote to condemn property for the project, then the county board might say, "Well, poo on you, city of Urbana. You didn't take our advice, so we're not gonna condemn. Project done, see you later."
Do we have a feel for the relative amount of property that needs to be acquired and/or condemned for the roundabout versus the T-intersection?
It's virtually the same. I mean, the, the acquisition of the property is primarily to get you from the railroad tracks over to Lincoln Avenue. I mean, you're talking about, now, you can argue this point until the cows come home. The engineers at Hanson's will tell you that there's actually less right-of-way that needs to be acquired for the roundabout versus a standard intersection. Now, you can talk about what a standard intersection's going to have, and is it gonna have left-hand turn lanes, right-hand turn lanes, or is it just gonna be two lanes? But all said, you're talking about hundreds of an acres of difference in acquisition of property in order to build the roundabout versus a typical three-legged intersection. The total acquisition for four acre, for four lanes going from the railroad tracks over to Lincoln Avenue is about 16.6 acres. So whatever portion of that is the intersection, which is very minute, you know, you're talking about maybe 1% of the total acquisition or less, whether you're gonna build a roundabout or build a, build a standard intersection. But the county does control the condemnation of that entire corridor, not only just the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Olympian Drive.
And to make it clear, I'm not making that threat, I'm simply asking if...
Right.
Will the counties, does, is it gonna make any difference really to the county whether there's a roundabout here or not, in terms of the amount of land we gotta get, or the amount of money it's gonna cost, or...
No.
You know, what are the implications to the county? Thank you.
Stephanie.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, I don't even know how we got in the middle of this roundabout argument in the first place, but we're here, and it's probably because of the city of Urbana. And that's, that's what it's really sounding like. And Ralph, I don't think I've seen, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think I've seen a combine go through France or Spain in a roundabout. What we're talking about is, in a rural area, a roundabout where it's displaced, might be safer, might not be safer. What we're looking at is, is putting a roundabout in the middle of nowhere for what purpose? Because now we have the city of Urbana determining that this is in the, in the best interest of the people in the rural community. So we're arguing typically, this is what has happened, every time we talk about the roundabout, who agrees, who doesn't agree? The rural community has overwhelmingly said, "We don't want the roundabout." But the city of Urbana doesn't care. They are going to put a roundabout in there. And that's, that's, to me, it's disrespectful, it's, it's discouraging, and I'm tired of this argument over a roundabout. Now, what's interesting is I've spoken with several city planners outside of Champagne County, and I have explained to them about a roundabout being placed into a rural area. Every single city planner that I have spoken to asks one question, "Why?" Why does the city of Urbana wanna put a roundabout in an area where it's really not going to be advantageous, number one? Number two, why is the city of Urbana going to put in a roundabout where people don't want a roundabout put in? So that's my question, and why we continually argue over this is beyond me. The city of Urbana doesn't wanna listen to the people in the community. It overwhelms me. And I, and I'm disgusted that we have to constantly argue about whether or not this is a, a, you know, a procedurally correct issue or not. There's a fact sheet here, and whether or not that's correct, and whose opinion is, is the most important opinion, the people's will or the city of Urbana?
Okay, Ash, and Steve, and Kim.
Are you accumulating land for four lanes or two lanes?
In our negotiation sessions, we have been working with the landowners to come up with that. The four-lane acquisition for land is 16.6 acres. If you only acquire enough for two lanes, it, it cuts that acquisition by 4.8 acres. So it gets it down in, you know, the 11.8 acres. So we're really trying to work with the landowners along the corridor, which is basically the squier farms, to come up with a reasonable solution to how many acres we need, and how many acres they're willing to give up for the project.
So are you trying to accumulate four lanes or two lanes?
The original project concept was four lanes.
And once you have four lanes, the roundabout has to go, does it not?
Actually, the, looking for the plans for the roundabout would be that on a two-lane roadway, the roundabout functions very well based on the capacities of the roadway. Once you go to four lanes, the plan would be to put in, to take out a roundabout, because then you have to go to a two-lane roundabout.
So we're putting, yeah, so we're putting in a roundabout while we're looking at turning it into a four-lane road, lane road, and destroying the roundabout and making a...
What, what's gonna happen, if you look into the future, is if you have a standard intersection and two lanes of roadway, at some point, when that intersection is no longer functionable with stop signs, you're gonna have to come in and put in stoplights. And then, and that's usually in the, you know, 6,000 to 8,000 vehicles per day type of area. And then you, you start seeing issues with there being congestion at the intersections, and then when you get to 10,000 to 12,000 vehicles a day, you're looking at going to four lanes. With, with a roundabout design, you would not have to revamp that intersection until you actually went to the four-lane cross-section of the roadway. So that's the advantage of going forward and not having to touch the intersection again for an extended period of time.
Steve Bozier.
I know three farmers up there, they got 36 row equipment, and some of them got some hired help that's not the best in the West. They move around in three, four-wheel drives, one behind the other, they go down whatever road they got to to get to where they wanna be. And it, and I appreciate Urbana trying to make that case with individual pieces of equipment. I'm familiar with about all of them, and they aren't begging out. And I don't know what kind of a traffic jam you could get in. If you got two or three of those and a roundabout at the same time, trying to get somewhere, they're liable to run into each other. As long as we've got mega farmers going all the way around this town, I, I just see no use for a roundabout that can make things worse than they are.
Okay, Carol, and then Lord.
I just, procedurally, what is the vote requirement on, on this letter, this whatever we wanna send to the city of Urbana?
Simple majority.
A supermajority for this.
Simple.
A simple majority. And then I'd like to close debate on this issue. I move close debate on this.
We've got somebody up to, that's talking, Lord, I'd already recognized him after you, Lord.
Well, this is a good case for what we started doing. The highway used to function well. I don't know if somebody could stand that they had to go in loud enough. I've been on, I've been on the highway for minutes, but I don't know how long. Everything, we still talking about the owners of the land. And anybody within common sense know that never the first place people you have to get on board. And when it come here, everybody else know about it but the highway committee. Leave me and what's going on. They spending money on running around and every other. It never once really came before the board that should be taking care of this, because I never would've agreed to the stuff that, that confronted us. They be talking about the owners, not your own board. Well, how in the world is this? It's just unbelievable. What's going on here is unbelievable. It started off wrong, and believe me, it's gonna end wrong.
We're having a, we have an unusual situation, very unusual in this, and I'm not, I'm not talking about being pro roundabout or not from my standpoint, but you have a very unusual situation in this particular land acquisition, in that there are three people that have to vote unanimously based on a farm agreement to sell property. Two out of those three are in favor of a roundabout, one out of those three is not. So there's no, there's no consensus within the family that's selling the property either. So...
I have loved it from, but what I'm saying, Jim.
This is a little bit more jumbled up than it even is here, if you can believe that, when you start talking to people that are family that signed an agreement to sell land. So it's, it is, it's very confusing and very jumbled up.
Well, my point is, if it hadn't came down the right way in the first place, I think some of us been on that board long enough to have common sense, a lot of this stuff would be front of us now. That's what I'm saying. We'd had the intelligence, just go out there, appease everybody, if you wanna call that, and make sure they was on it, and agree. We up here now, ain't nobody is agreeing to nothing. This is ridiculous.
Okay, I'll...
I don't know, I think you need to scrap the whole thing and start over.
Okay, Carol, I call for the question.
Second.
And I allow Lord to speak. So we got a, all in favor calling for the question, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote?
Aye.
Okay, we're calling for the question. Can I see a show of hands?
Roll call.
Roll call? Okay.
State the question again, please.
Would you read the motion?
Yeah, read the motion. Has anybody written it down?
The motion was for the county board to advise the city of Urbana of its support of a standard intersection at Olympian and Lincoln and not a roundabout. So a yes vote is, is against the roundabout, and a no vote would be for the roundabout? No, a yes vote supports a standard intersection and not a roundabout, right? That was your motion?
Yes.
And no vote is for a roundabout?
No.
Yes, sir.
Whoops, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You voted not for you wanted.
Yes. She, Lorraine would let me finish. Yes.
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Langdon?
No.
Maxwell?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Mike Mitchell?
Yes.
Bozier?
Yes.
O'Connor?
No.
Petrie?
Yes.
Pleasantberry?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Crasals?
No.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wybo?
I don't care.
Go to the bathroom.
I'll vote yes now and no next, next, at the county board meeting. So vote yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Ammons?
No.
Anderson?
No.
pencil?
Yes.
Berksen?
Yes.
Bets?
No.
Carter?
I'll move again.
No.
Scovars?
No.
Ash Green?
Yes.
Cloverfield?
Yes.
James? Yes.
And most in caring.
No.
Carter?
I'm moving in, no.
Cores?
No.
Esring?
Yes.
Overfield?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, that is something we want to say.
Yes, I just have two information questions for Jeff. I know you attended the recent ICC meeting.
Yes.
And also, I assume you were with the visit.
Yes.
The hearing officer. Could you take a few minutes and just update us on what occurred at those two situations?
Well, the status hearing, it wasn't a true hearing. They call them status hearings, and it's an administrative law judge that administers those status hearings and actually the actual hearing. Basically, at the status hearing, we came to the decision to have the tour. That's about all that really happened at that status. And they laid out some boundaries for how that tour was going to be handled. And then recently, on April 30th, the administrative law judge, as well as folks from the cities of Champaign and Urbana, RPC and myself, and the Preserve Olympian Farmland Group and their attorney, all got on an MTD bus and basically drove up Lincoln Avenue to Fort Harris Road, over to Market Street, and then back down to Olympian Drive and kind of made the loop. And from what I can gather from the Illinois Commerce Commission hearing is that really the administrative law judge is in charge of ruling whether or not the bridge over the railroad tracks is an appropriate thing for the ICC money to be paid on. It's debatable, and I don't even know if he's come to a conclusion in his own mind or not, whether or not all this periphery stuff like Lincoln Avenue and Olympian and roundabouts and all that stuff really will have any bearing whatsoever on his decision. His decision is based on the overpass over the railroad tracks. So we took that tour, he took notes. There's going to be another pre-hearing, apparently, here in the next month. And then we'll actually go to a hearing after that where there'll be actual testimony from the two sides about the appropriateness of building the bridge over the railroad tracks.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay, Max Coyle.
I know it's getting late, Jeff, and I wonder, I know you've recently gone out of state for a convention or a meeting. I wonder if you could give us a brief report or maybe even defer that into the next county meeting that you're going to be here. But I would like to have that report at some point if you.
Sure. I was waiting for the, actually, the county board meeting, because I knew I'd have to come back. I knew this would be long.
Okay, there's no chair's report, and the only thing, everything is on designated consent agenda except D, the roundabout vote.
That's what she said.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
We're going to build a campfire here pretty soon, Ralph.
Okay, we have a couple of closed sessions. Brendan, you want to do the first one?
I moved that we enter into executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C11 to consider litigation, which is probable or imminent against Champaign County. I further move that the following individuals remain present: the county's legal counsel, county administrator, and recording secretary.
Roll call.
Did you repeat that, Brendan? I didn't get that.
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Laganine?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Bowser?
Yeah.
Go Connor? Petrie?
Yes.
Pleasant Berry?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Cassalis?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wyville? Alex? Ammons? Anderson?
Yes.
Bensel?
Yes.
Berksen?
Yes.
Bess? Carter?
Yes.
Cores? Esring?
Yeah, the fancy out there getting warm.
Overfield?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.